Thirty having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. President Curry.
Here.
President Curry is present. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole is present. Alder Govindarajan.
Here.
Alder Govindarajan is present. Alder Ughair.
Here.
Alder Ughair is present. Alder Harrington McKinney. She's not coming back. Alder Knox.
Here.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris.
Here.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayadze.
Present.
Alder Mayadze is present. Alder Romo.
Present.
Alder Romo is present. Alder Tischler.
Here.
Alder Tischler is present. Alder Verveer.
Here.
Alder Verveer is present. Alder Vitavir.
Here.
Alder Vitavir is present. Alder Weheli.
Here.
Alder Weheli is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. I will begin with first my usual opening remarks and then special opening remarks. But I would just like to remind everybody in the chambers that we are here to do the business of the people of Madison, and we will try and conduct that business as kindly and as respectfully as we can. I will particularly ask that everyone concerned, council members, staff, members of the public, refrain from using profanity in your remarks. And I would add an extra reminder that we can only discuss items that are on the agenda. And so if remarks stray from items that are on the agenda, I will gently remind you to please come back to the agenda item. And if you're unable to do that, I'll ask you to please refrain from speaking. Now on to our special opening item, which is item one. And I am so incredibly pleased and honored to welcome the Lord Mayor Talib Ahmed Ben Suda of the Kanafing Municipal Council in the Gambia to the city of Madison. Let's please give them a warm Wisconsin welcome. So as many of you know, Kanafing is our sister city in the Gambia, and the Lord Mayor has been here in Madison with various delegations several times. I had the honor of leading a delegation not that long ago, and it was an incredible experience. I am already convinced that there is no way that I can top the Lord Mayor's hospitality. We are going to try and do our best, however. And I wanted to make sure that we took a moment while they're in town, in the formal council meeting setting, to introduce the Lord Mayor and the delegation to the council and to honor their presence here. To that end, I have a proclamation, which I would like to share with the council and the public and then present to the Lord Mayor. Whereas Madison has a significant Gambian population, many of whom wish to strengthen ties between their country of origin and their current home; and whereas in 2016, the city of Madison and the city of Kanafing established a sister city partnership; and whereas the residents of both cities have proactively worked to build and maintain strong global relations since the establishment of the sister city partnership; and whereas both cities have strengthened their relationship through exchange visits; the mayor of Kanafing and delegates have visited Madison on several occasions, and the mayor of Madison and delegates visited Kanafing in 2022; and whereas the city of Madison believes that the sister city relationship between the city of Madison, Wisconsin, USA, and the city of Kanafing, the Gambia, West Africa, has promoted and facilitated a greater understanding of the cultural, economic, and educational ideals of the two communities and their citizenry; and whereas Lord Mayor Talib Ahmed Ben Suda of Kanafing Municipal Council, the Gambia, and delegates will be spending the week of April 16th in Madison to engage a number of stakeholders on various topics of mutual interest, including city planning, sustainability, economic development, and entrepreneurship. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, on behalf of the residents of Madison, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim April 16th, 2024 through April 21st, 2024, as Kanafing Municipal Council Week in the city of Madison. Thank you. That's for you. And then if my attorney will share his microphone. I'd like to invite the Lord Mayor to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I first want to acknowledge Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, and I'd like to thank her for her friendship and partnership to the city of Kanafing. I'd also like to thank all the honorable aldermen and council members for your hospitality, and of course, the great people of Madison, who without them, we all wouldn't be sitting here.
That's right.
Today, I'm here with some colleagues. I have a council member, Musa Abah, who is a councilman at the Kanafing municipality. We have the director of planning and development, who is the person who ensures we get everything done, which is Nyima Kamara. We have, of course, a state representative, who is Gambian-American, Samba Balde, and of course, the sister city president, who is Jere Kujabi. We're thrilled to be here. The sister city relationship goes as far as 2014, which is about eight years now, and it's a special relationship for us at Kanafing. Sister cities are not about institutions or government, it's about the people, because people make up these organizations. Since we've started the sister city relationship, we've made friends, we've become very close, we've had a good collaboration and understanding of the human soul. We realize that all our aspirations, all our desires are the same, maybe the challenges might be different. And Mayor Conway has really shown us the way. She's really shown us warmth, she's shown us a special person in her, and we have want, we want to share more. We want to be closer to the city of Madison. We want more of you to come and share your experiences with us in the smiling coast of Africa, which is the Gambia. So without further ado, we thank you, and we hope to see you back in Gambia, where we can share our culture, our experiences. And she's been proven to be a good dancer. And we have 13 tribes in the Gambia, and when she came, we had all the musical instruments out, and she danced to every one of them. And I know you all will enjoy when you come. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's really an honor to host you, and I'm very much looking forward to the week. We have a number of events planned. If the public is interested, there is an event on Saturday night hosted by the sister city committee to honor the delegation, and, not to put too fine a point on it, to raise funds for the sister city. So we certainly welcome your engagement. And I welcome the residents of Madison to learn about Kanafing. One of the things that I think is really valuable about all of our sister city partnerships, and we do have 10 sister cities, is the opportunity for us here in Madison to learn about those cities and their countries, and what they're doing, what they're working on, what they experience. And so I invite you to learn more about the Gambia, its history, its present, and its future. And please join me once more time in thanking our delegation for being here tonight. Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure. Thank you, ma'am. I look forward to much more. Enjoy your evening. I didn't think it would be very welcoming to make them sit through the council meeting. All right, so that was item one on our agenda. And so I will invite our poet laureate.
Hey there. Good evening.
Thank you. Well, I'm just waiting for things to quiet down in the room a minute before I fully introduce you, sorry. So I'd like to introduce our poet laureate, Stephen Espada Dawson, who will recite "When My Brother Visits, We Play Hide and Seek." Stephen?
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank everyone here that was able to make it to my poet laureate debut gala on World Poetry Day. I recognize many of your faces and names, so I appreciate it. It was a special night. I also wanted to give you all a very quick update about the things I've been up to. In the past couple months, I've been a busy poet. I've made no less than 10 appearances as poet laureate, including public readings, workshops, interviews, and acting as a judge for poetry contests. Most notably for me was teaching a workshop through UW's Odyssey program, where I was able to bring poetry to non-traditional college students. I myself am a non-traditional college student in that I was the first in my immediate family to graduate high school, let alone college, and eventually graduate school. That is to say that that was an especially memorable workshop for me, as I consider those my people. I was also featured, lucky enough to be featured, as part of the Rumpus Magazine's yearly National Poetry Month series, and the poem I want to read tonight is from that feature. For me, it's a poem of place, and family, and grief, and possibility. And thank you, Mayor, for that introduction. "When my brother visits, we play hide and seek. When my brother visits, we play hide and seek with Santiago's VCR. The black ribbon of como agua para chocolate still treadmill inside. If the new kid is working the pawn shop, we'll have enough to split pioneer chicken. Friar grease baptizing our knuckles. Next week, we'll lift a fistful of Tio's dirt weed, his rocking chair cure for foggy eyes, then mom's grocery bag stash of laundromat quarters. Gravity stretched it thin enough to see the tidy stacks of guillotine fathers. Us, less scared of laura, more scared of her. Only one we knew could swear up with, square up and make even God flinch. My brother and me practiced hiding so much, we eventually lost each other. Him paddling down any river that ends at the tributary below a tourniquet. I learned you can lose yourself in someone else's losing. It took a dozen years of feeling around in the dark for me to find a family photo with everyone in frame. When I saw it, my eyes fogged too. In my periphery, I saw my mom firing pearls from a slingshot. One by one, she's got a target in mind but won't say who. I see them pass through the sky like a needle through denim. I'm still waiting for them to land." Thank you, everyone.
Our next section is honoring resolutions. Item three is Legisstar 82729 proclaiming April 22nd, 2024 through April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Week. For item three, we do not have anyone to receive, so we will dispense with reading. Alder, President Curry, a motion on item three, please. Moved and seconded to adopt item three. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll adopt item three and proclaim April 22nd through 26th as Arbor Week in the city of Madison. Item four is Legisstar 82756 expressing appreciation for the services and dedication that Assistant Fire Chief Tracy L. Burris gave to our community during her 22 years of service to the city of Madison. On item four, I will turn first to Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to center Assistant Chief's leadership. I literally was just scrolling, I was online, and I saw that the chief was retiring, and what honestly, what stuck out to me is this is a woman that looks like me, this is a person who looks like me, and I did not necessarily know much about their leadership. And I thought it was a perfect opportunity to center, to center the Assistant Chief's leadership, so other folks who resemble the chief can see and sort of like have the same experience that I'm having, that this is someone who has served the city for 20-plus years. The leadership is magnificent, from what I've learned when I, when Isaac shared what Chief Burris has accomplished. And I just honestly, selfishly, it was a perfect opportunity to center, to center your leadership. So I believe Alder Romo is going to kick off us reading the resolution.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Romo?
Thank you, Mayor. I did not learn what part, so cut me off when I'm stopping.
Right through the end of Monroe Street.
Thank you, Alder. Whereas Assistant Fire Chief Tracy L. Burris started with the Madison Fire Department on October 15th, 2001, and retired on April 2nd, 2024, after more than 22 years of dedicated service to our community. Whereas she began her firefighting career in 1995 in Macomb, Illinois. And whereas Assistant Fire Chief Burris began her MFD career as a firefighter/EMT at Fire Station 4 on Monroe Street.
And whereas she was promoted to apparatus engineer in 2011, and whereas she was promoted to lieutenant in 2014, and whereas she was promoted to division chief of training in 2016, and whereas Assistant Fire Chief Burris oversaw five recruit academies as division chief of training, resulting in the addition of 72 recruits to our department workforce. And whereas she was promoted to assistant chief of personnel in 2019.
And whereas she was recognized as one of Wisconsin's first responders of the year in 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council express their appreciation for the services and dedication that Assistant Fire Chief Tracy L. Burris gave to our community during her 22 years of service to the city of Madison. Be it further resolved that the mayor and common council express that Assistant Fire Chief Burris, her leadership, her dedication, and her friendship will be missed, and that we wish her the best in her retirement from the city of Madison Fire Department.
Thank you, Alders. We will take that as moved by Alder Madison and seconded by Alder Verveer. And we do have Chief Burris retired here with us. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
I absolutely will. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I just wanted to start by saying that I am truly humbled that this resolution even was brought forth. Definitely not something I was expecting to get a call about. I would like to thank Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway, Alders Madison, Verveer, and Romo for sponsoring and co-sponsoring, and all others, all other Alders who are in favor. I am absolutely grateful to retired Fire Chief Deborah Mesqua for selecting me to be a member of this team and to work for this city. My career with the Madison Fire Department and the city has given me so many great experiences, several lifelong friends, not just from within the department, but also just from several other city agencies, and has provided my family with a lot of opportunities. And I will always be very grateful and proud that I worked for this city and this department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for your many, many years of service. We appreciate you and your comrades in fire, and I know this is true of the fire department, you never really leave, but that is also true of the city of Madison. You are always going to be a part of Team City, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
Alder Martinez Rutherford?
I just wanted to say something real quickly about the Assistant Fire Chief. When I moved to Madison in 2012, I worked at Monty's Blue Plate Diner, and she and her family were some of the kind of spaces that welcomed me to the city. And I will personally be sad to see her go, but am so grateful for what she's done for our community, for the city, and just our area. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded, and we'll move on to item five, which is Legisstar 82834 affirming unwavering support for survivors of domestic violence and abuse. For item five, I will again turn to Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I remember that piece now. Just, I'll just speak briefly to the resolution, because I would prefer to spend more time on hearing from our speakers. But I decided to bring the resolution for it, really just to be clear about not only my individual support, but the council's support for victims of, victims of domestic Domestic violence doesn't just happen in isolation, it is happening every single day, it is happening every minute of the day, and it is, I mean, we even have a recent case of domestic violence here in the city that we're all grappling and hearing about. So this was really an opportunity to say that we stand with survivors of domestic violence, whether you're a young person, a young adult, an adult, an older person, there are, I just, anyone hearing my voice, I just want you to know, there are a bevy of resources available to you across the county. We have leaders in this room who I implore you to take down their information, because not only does the person who is experiencing abuse need the information, but the loved ones, the coworkers, the friends, the neighbors can also use that information, because it is, it is one of the most difficult experiences to get out of, it is one of the most difficult spaces to be believed in, and I think us, not just as elected leaders, but us as individuals who partake in our community, we have a level of responsibility to offer some level of community care to those who we know are experiencing abuse. So whatever your, whatever your experience, whether you, it's you, or you're a community member, or you're an elected official, I just implore you to make note of the information. You can always reach out to agencies to ask how you, as someone who wants to help someone else, what can you do, because sometimes it is dangerous to call someone in the moment to report the abuse. But again, for me, this was an opportunity to say that this council does not ignore any survivor, no matter who the survivor is, and that we absolutely stand with folks who are victims of domestic violence. And I believe, well, not believe, I do know. We have four agency leads here to accept the resolution, so I can't remember if they can accept it first, or we're reading first.
We read it first, Alder.
Thank you, Alder Ver, you know, I want to call you Verveer, or, you know, your other name. I mean, adverse, listen, you know, I want to be, sometimes I refer to myself as mayor, so I didn't do that one tonight. Y'all try coming from one event to another, and have to go back to it. Okay, I will start it off. So whereas according to the National Domestic Violence Hotline, domestic violence or intimate partner violence is a pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control over another partner in an intimate relationship. And whereas domestic violence can look very different on a case-to-case basis and includes physical violence, coercion, cohesion, coercion, ooh, Lord, I'm tired, threats, intimidation, stalking, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, or economic abuse to control another partner in a relationship. And...
Whereas domestic violence can be a single act or a pattern of behavior in all kinds of relationships, including dating, marriage, family, and roommate relationships. And whereas domestic violence is a public health issue that contributes to chronic health problems and often limits the ability of survivors to manage other chronic illnesses. And whereas domestic violence is a leading cause of homelessness for women and children in the need for safe and affordable housing is one of the most pressing concerns for survivors. And...
Whereas on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. And whereas the National Intimate Partner Sexual Violence Survey data reports that, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people per year. And...
Whereas data from the National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey indicates that 41% of women and 26% of men have experienced sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime, and experienced an intimate partner violence-related impact. And whereas over 61 million women and 53 million men have experienced psychological aggressions by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And...
Whereas intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime and 72% of all murder-suicides. And whereas 1 in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. And whereas in Wisconsin in 2022, there were 96 lives lost in domestic partner homicides, and since 2000, there have been at least 1,268 individuals killed in domestic violence homicides. And...
Whereas in 2022, members of the Madison Police Department spent 13,312 hours on domestic disturbance calls. And whereas in 2023, 40% of homicides were related to domestic violence in the city of Madison. And whereas in 2022, Domestic Abuse Intervention Services, DAIS, fielded 7,534 total calls and texts to their 24-hour helpline and text line, with the average length of calls up nearly 20% from 2021. And...
Whereas there are various barriers to reporting, including a fear of retaliation from the abuser, concern about not being believed, the personal and emotional difficulty of sharing experiences of violence, and the desire to protect the abuser from legal consequences. And whereas Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and other people of color face unique challenges to reporting domestic violence, including a lack of service providers of similar backgrounds and language, as well as institutional racism within law enforcement and criminal justice systems. And...
Whereas if you need help, there are several resources, both locally and nationally, that you can reach out to, including but not limited, and a disclaimer for this, I'm not going to read the hyperlinks or the phone numbers, but we will make this available. DACE, Domestic Abuse Intervention Services Phone Line and Text Line, Unidos La Red, National Domestic Violence Hotline, National Rape Crisis Center, N Domestic Abuse Wisconsin, the African Center for Community Development Safe Care Outreach, Freedom, Inc., The Rainbow Project, Family Services Madison, Latino Children and Families Council, and Armonia, Women's Voices Program Services.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Madison-
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as moved by Alder Madison and seconded by Alder Field. We do have a number of people here to receive the resolution and wishing to speak as well. And we will start with Virginia Gittens Escudero, the Executive Director of Unidos, who will, I believe, read the resolution in Spanish.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Virginia Gittens Escudero. I'm the Executive Director at Unidos, nonprofit serving victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking in Dane County. We support primarily individuals from the Latinx community. I'll proceed to read the statement, the resolution, in Spanish. Afirmando el apoyo inquebrantable a los sobrevivientes de violencia y abuso doméstico. Considerando que según la línea directa nacional contra la violencia doméstica, la violencia doméstica o violencia de pareja es un patrón de comportamiento utilizado por una pareja para mantener el poder, el poder, el control sobre otra persona en una relación íntima. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica puede verse muy diferente según el caso e incluye violencia física, coerción, amenazas, intimidación, a sesgo, abuso emocional, abuso sexual, o abuso económico para controlar a otra pareja en una relación. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica puede ser un acto único o un patrón de comportamiento en todo tipo de relaciones incluidas las citas, el matrimonio, la familia, y las relaciones de compañero y de cuarto. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica es un problema de salud pública que contribuye a problemas de salud crónicos y a menudo limita la capacidad de los sobrevivientes para manejar otras enfermedades crónicas. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica es una de las principales causas de falta de vivienda para mujeres y niños y la necesidad de viviendas seguras y asequibles es una de las preocupaciones más apremiadas para los sobrevivientes. Y considerando que un día normal se realizará, se realizan más de 20,000 llamadas telefónicas a líneas directas de violencia doméstica en todo el país. Y considerando que los datos de la Encuesta Nacional sobre la Violencia Sexual en la Pareja Íntima informan que en promedio casi 20 personas por minuto son abusadas físicamente por una pareja íntima en los Estados Unidos, lo que equivale a más de 10 millones de personas por año. Y considerando que los datos de la última Encuesta Nacional sobre la Violencia Doméstica, la violencia sexual y pareja íntima indican que el 41% de las mujeres, el 26% de los hombres, han experimentado violencia sexual, violencia física, y/o acoso por parte de una pareja íntima durante su vida, y han experimentado violencia de pareja íntima impacto relaci, o impacto relacionado. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica es un problema de salud pública que contribuye a problemas de salud crónicos y a menudo limita la capacidad de los sobrevivientes para manejar otras enfermedades crónicas. Y considerando que la violencia doméstica es una de las principales causas de falta de vivienda para mujeres y niños y la necesidad de viviendas seguras y asequibles es una de las preocupaciones más apremiantes para los sobrevivientes. Y considerando que un día normal se realizará, se realizan más de 20,000 llamadas telefónicas en línea directa de violencia doméstica en todo el país. Considerando que más de 61 millones de mujeres y 53 millones de hombres han experimentado agresión psicológica por parte de una pareja íntima a lo largo de su vida. Y considerando que la violencia de pareja representa 15% de todos los delitos violentos y el 72% de todos los asesinatos y suicidios. Y considerando que uno de cada 15 niños está expuesto a la violencia de pareja cada año, y el 90% de estos niños son testigos presenciales de esta violencia. Y considerando que en Wisconsin, en el 2022, se perdieron 96 vidas en homicidios de pareja de hecho, y desde 2000, ha habido al menos 1,268 personas asesinadas en homicidios por violencia doméstica. Y considerando que en 2022, los miembros del Departamento de la Policía de Madison dedicaron 13,000 horas a llamadas por disturbios domésticos. Y considerando que en el 2023, el 40% de los homicidios estuvieron relacionados con la violencia doméstica en la ciudad de Madison. Y considerando que en el 2022, los Servicios de Intervención de Abuso Doméstico, DACE, recibieron un total de 7,000 llamadas, mensajes de textos a su línea de ayuda y línea de mensajes de texto las 24 horas. Y la duración promedio de las llamadas aumentó casi un 20% con respecto al 2021. Y considerando que existen varias barreras para denunciar, incluido el miedo, el miedo a represalias por parte del abusador, la preocupación por no ser creído, la dificultad personal y emocional de compartir experiencias de violencia, y el deseo de proteger al abusador de consecuencias legales. Y considerando que las personas negras, indígenas, latinas, y otras personas de color enfrentan desafíos únicos para denunciar la violencia doméstica, incluida la falta de proveedores de servicio con antecedentes e idiomas similares, así como el racismo institucional dentro de las, de los sistemas policiales y de justicia penal. Considerando que si se necesita ayuda, existen varios recursos a nivel local, como a los que pueden comunicarse, que incluyen entre otros, DACE, Unidos La Red, la Línea de Ayuda de Violencia Doméstica Nacional, Centro de Recursos de la Violencia Sexual, o RCC, la Coalición de Violencia Doméstica de Wisconsin, el Centro Africano para el Desarrollo Comunitario, Freedom, Inc., el Proyecto Arcoiris, Family Services of Madison, Consejo Latino para las Familias y Niños, y Armonía, o Women's Voices Program. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que el Consejo Común de Madison afirma con orgullo su apoyo inquebrantable a los sobrevivientes de violencia y abuso doméstico. Se resuelve además que el Consejo Común de Madison apoya a los sobrevivientes con compasión y solidaridad. I also want to say a few words to the members of the Common Council, to those remarks, a pivotal moment in our community commitment to supporting victims of domestic violence. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to the council and other Madison for the resolution embracing victims. However, our journey towards ensuring safety and justice for all cannot end here. Domestic violence remains a pervasive issue, one that demands unwavering attention and action. As we stand at this critical juncture, I implore the Common Council to seize the opportunity to enact regulations that foster accountability and prevent further harm to our community members. The voices of countless residents echo the urgent call for accountability, and it's our duty as representatives to heed their plea. Let us honor the courage of survivors who have come forward and those who continue to heal by enacting measures that uphold their rights and protect them from harm. Together, let us forge a future where every individual feels safe, valued, and empowered. The time for action is now, and our community is counting on us to lead with integrity and compassion. Thank you.
Gracias, Virginia. I should add, each, we have four folks who are receiving the proclamation, so they'll each receive a copy of the proclamation. We'll take a moment to receive that and take a picture. Next, I'd like to welcome Dana Pelaban, the Executive Director for RCC Sexual Violence Resource Center.
My name is Dana Pelaban, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. First, I want to thank Alder Madison for sponsoring this resolution and sharing her personal story, which we are not entitled to. Mayor Rhodes Conway, and other Alders who have been supportive of victim services in our city. Second, I want you to know I did get the purple memo. However, I am here representing RCC Sexual Violence Resource Center, formerly the Rape Crisis Center, during Sexual Assault Awareness Month, which is why I am wearing teal. Why am I asserting sexual violence in a domestic violence resolution? It is because 80 to 90% of survivors of sexual violence know their harm-doer. It innately means that sexual violence is a part of the harm of intimate partner violence. When we think of domestic violence, we focus on the lethality of physical violence. It is important to note that domestic violence includes sexual, emotional, and financial violence. It's important to note that reporting rates for victims of sexual violence is around 31%. It is also important to note that only 2 to 8% of all reports of sexual and domestic violence are considered unfounded without enough evidence or false. That means when we say "believe survivors," we say that because they are telling the truth. That's uncomfortable because it means we all know a harm-doer, and that doesn't feel good. That's why part of this work is care for harm-doers. Violence prevention includes violence interruption and restorative justice. This is something that we know well in victim services. This is something that is a part of our work groups. It is what we engage the community on, because we know that the criminal legal system is not the preferred method for survivors to receive help and care, many of whom deeply care about the harm-doers and want them to be better. The tenets of restorative justice include accountability for harm and being in community with peacekeepers and the person harmed to determine reparations. That is a model that works, and our county wants to expand that model through new initiatives like the community court. We can make changes that are holistic for those in our community to affect the rates of domestic and sexual violence through concentrated efforts and evidence-based work. All of this sounds easy, but it's not. It's work. It's painful for everyone involved, including for the family and loved ones. It is why it is important for us to be who we say we are. Empty words without action gives us nothing but a false sense of security. It tells survivors that image is more important than action. That action also includes funding for point-of-service agencies that serve victims. As the only 24-hour in-person response victim service agency in our county, not only are we underfunded, but I personally am called upon at 3:00 in the morning to respond even in cases without sexual violence, because for DV agencies to respond in these situations that are as important as sexual violence is cost prohibitive, especially when funding is being cut for base programs and shelter. This underfunding equates strain on the system as a whole and gaps in services for survivors. I want you to know that the staff at the city agencies who work with funding us are stellar. Nancy Sayez, for example, listens deeply and works to always find solutions. I appreciate all the staff, like Jim, and Yolanda, and Jennifer, and countless others whose work supports victim services. It is the partnerships with the city that is important to further this work. I thank the many Alders I have been in community with, to listen to hard conversations, and new friends that I have made on this council, who I am starting to build relationships with. It is the hard conversations that make a pathway to solutions. In conclusion, I ask that the council take into account survivors' needs and calls to action, and victim service agencies that do the work to let you know the best practices and services needed for this in our community. But again, most importantly, I implore you to be who you say you are, and have your actions and funding decisions reflect those values. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Shannon Berry, the Executive Director for Domestic Abuse Intervention Services, better known as DACE.
I have a number of DACE staff and board members here with me tonight that I would ask to stand, if you would. It's always really, I'm kind of a little teary yet still from listening to Dana, so you'll just have to give me a minute. So, good evening, members of the council, fellow advocates, and citizens of our community. I am here on behalf of DACE, along with all of these community members, DACE staff, notably more than 60% of the DACE staff are ourselves, survivors of domestic violence, DACE board directors, members, survivors, and loved ones. A lot of us are wearing purple tonight, and with that, we are trying to wear purple to show a collective commitment to support and believe survivors of domestic abuse, each and every one of them. Domestic abuse remains one of the most chronic, yet under-reported crises facing our community today. The events across Dane County in recent days have shown us just how far-reaching and unpredictable the impacts of domestic violence can be on a community. Children coming home from after-school programs witnessing a homicide, area businesses going into lockdown, first responders and police officers entering dangerous situations to provide care, not to mention the devastating losses suffered by friends and families of those involved. Indeed, every single one of us is touched when this happens in our community. The work that lies in front of us is to break down the barriers for survivors reaching out for help and getting the support that they need. And together this evening, we're confronting a hard truth. It often takes a chorus of voices for the plight of survivors to be heard and believed. It should not be so. Every voice, whether it stands alone or within a sea of others, deserves to be heard with dignity and respect. Every story matters. Every survivor deserves our unwavering support and belief. The resolution that we are here for today, affirming unwavering support for survivors of domestic violence and abuse, is more than symbolic. It's a pledge that our community will not stand by silently. It is a promise that we will act and not just react. It's an assurance that we will listen, support, and believe, not because of numbers, but because it's the right thing to do. So I want to thank you, on behalf of all of us at DACE, for standing with us and our sister organizations, Unidos, RCC, and others, for believing survivors, and as you look around the room, for all the folks who are here tonight who showed up to say with their presence, "We believe you." We can only begin to bring about the change that is so desperately needed when, as a community, we stand together to believe survivors. Thank you.
Last but definitely not least, I'd like to invite Jennifer Ginsburg, the Executive Director of Safe Harbor.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Thank you, Alder Madison, for bringing this resolution forward. It hurts a little, but it's necessary, but it is. My name is Jennifer Ginsburg, and I'm the Executive Director of Safe Harbor Child Advocacy Center here in Madison. And I'm here to talk about the children that are affected by domestic violence every day. At Safe Harbor, we serve children age 3 to 18 who are victims of child abuse, sexual abuse, physical abuse, neglect, and witnesses to violent crimes. And those violent crimes include domestic violence. Most of the time, it's not reported, but when it is, the children come to Safe Harbor to talk about what they saw and what they heard. As you might expect, we see a lot of traumatized children. But one thing I've noticed over the years is that the kids who are coming in because of domestic violence are the most sad. They are so sad about what is happening in their life. The pain and the trauma are significant. Now, for those of you who, like me, have been around for a few decades, might remember the days where the prevailing myth was that the kids were not affected. They didn't hear anything, they didn't see anything, they were asleep in their beds, they're fine. That is most certainly not the case now. It was certainly not the case then. The research is clear. Witnessing intimate partner violence at home as a child affects a person for their entire life, both psychologically and physically. Children are brought to Safe Harbor to have a forensic interview. Children are brought to Safe Harbor to have a forensic interview where they describe what happened, what they saw, because they're a witness to a crime, because domestic violence is a crime. They talk about the terror of watching their mother be strangled and thinking she was going to die. And we ask them, "What did you see?" And they tell us, "Her face was purple. She was gasping for air." They tell us about taking their younger siblings into another room and cowering in fear and wondering how to keep their brothers and sisters safe. Or jumping on the abuser's back trying to get him or her to stop and then being thrown against a wall and hitting their head. And sometimes the most painful thing is what the abuser says to them or their parent about being worthless, about how nobody loves them. Children do not just shrug these things off. They are afraid. They may have difficulty sleeping. They may not want to separate from their safe parent. They may feel guilty about the abuse and blame themselves. Some kids may feel like they have to be home all the time to protect their parent. They may have difficulty concentrating and not do well at school. They also may have a lot of headaches and stomach aches. Some kids and teenagers act out aggressively, getting into fights and bullying, skipping school or running away. They may numb their feelings with alcohol or drugs. They may become depressed and withdrawn. So, how does this resolution help them? We need to send a message to children. Children don't talk about the abuse because they don't think people will believe them or support them, and they worry that they will be blamed. We know that the single most important factor in a child's healing is the presence of a healing adult, a presence of a supportive adult. So, let's also give them the support of a community. A community that says domestic violence and abuse are not acceptable ever, that you are not alone. A community that stands with all victims and survivors of intimate partner violence, including the children. Thank you.
I want to thank all four of you for speaking and for sharing your moving experiences. But more importantly, I want to thank all four of you and all of your colleagues for the incredibly important work that you do in our community. Madison would not be the community it is without your work. And you're all right, yes, more is needed. But I really, really, really appreciate, and I know this whole council does as well, the incredible work that these organizations do in our community. Thank you again for your work. We do have a handful of folks registered to speak on this honoring resolution, starting with Tyson Vitale of District 6, to be followed by Shadira Kilfoi Flores. Do we have Tyson? Doesn't appear that we have Tyson in the room, nor do I see them on the Zoom. So then, Shadira Kilfoi Flores of District 6, to be followed by Brandy De La Rosa. Shady?
My name is Shadira Kilfoi Flores. My friends and family call me Shady. I'm a survivor of every abuse that was just shared here tonight. The first time that I witnessed domestic abuse was when I was three years old. I remember my father throwing dishes. Shortly after, my parents divorced and my father was deported back to Mexico. And it has had a profound effect on my entire life, how I have lived my life, how I raise my children. And I wasn't believed when I was a sexual abuse survivor. So I too thank you, Mayor and Common Council, for hearing me, for seeing me and believing me. There is no reconciliation without truth and accountability. On the evening of 2008 New Year's, my intimate partner tried to kill me. He did not want me to have his baby. And it's harder for me to think about the pain that it causes people to listen to my story than it is to share my story because I've been very, very lucky to have a community who supports me. And I have had a decade of trauma therapy. I have acute PTSD, not just PTSD, acute PTSD because of all the trauma I have experienced. Part of the reason that I wear the hats and take the roles in this community that I do is because I know how it feels to have systems that are supposed to be in place and help us. When this partner of mine tried to kill me, the prosecutor did not follow up. She never called me. I believe it's because she saw the name Flores and stigmatized me instantly and felt that this is something to normalize and that maybe I wouldn't be a good witness in my perpetrator's case in holding him accountable. So I was very lucky to have WACADV and to have DAES and to have people there to help hold my hand. But really, what ended up happening is that he was allowed... He was given a plea bargain without my knowledge. And so my rights were violated as a victim of a violent crime. So then, that is where my having to file formal complaints against people in power who are supposed to protect me began. That's the first time I had to file a formal complaint with the Department of Justice because she did not do her job, her diligence in making sure that this man was held accountable.
Shady, I'm sorry, you've reached three minutes.
Thank you.
If you would wrap up. Thank you so much, Shady. Our next registrant is Brandy De La Rosa of District 2, to be followed by Veronica Figueroa. Do we have Brandy? If not, then Veronica Figueroa of District 11, to be followed by Baltasar De Anda Santana.
My name is Veronica Figueroa Vélez, and I'm actually District 18 resident. As a former victim advocate, I know that women who come forward and those who remain silent generally speak the truth. In a city where racial inequalities and social disparities continues to hinder our ability to engage in tangible solutions to address social issues, we must hold ourselves and those who hold positions of power to high standards. Victim survivors and their families deserve to have people in position of power who are going to uphold the law for all, not for some, who are going to hold themselves accountable and treat victims and survivors with dignity and respect. As a District 18 resident, I stand with victims and survivors. Mr. Mianse, your lack of presence here today speaks valiance to one of your constituents. You have failed us. Your lack of accountability and misleading messages continue to cause harm to those you have impacted. I urge you to reconsider a public apology to victims and survivors. I am not alone when I say that you do not represent the North Side.
Veronica, the item before us is a resolution.
Yep. To the city, I urge you to take this unfortunate moment in time to set precedents and implement policies that address any violence allegations by members of the city, in which termination of powers is the result after proper due process. Accountability must continue to be at the forefront to minimize harm and additional trauma. To victims and survivors, thank you for your bravery. I see you and I believe you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Baltasar De Anda Santana of District 10, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe. Baltasar?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, thank you very much for your service. And you know, today, the city of Madison has done a proclamation affirming and wearing support for survivors of domestic violence. Last week, I met a person who shared with me how frightened they have been because of their ex-partner domestic violence. This person shared with me that they had to stop being part of the Madison community because of fears of harassment to their ex-partners. And my heart sank when I heard this. Madison, we can do better. We must do better for our community. And I might break some rules here, but I just have to move on with what I have written here. I have been silently reading the post in regards to Alder Charles mentioning his domestic violence against some of women in our community.
Baltasar, speaking to a specific case is not appropriate at this time.
As someone who has been physically and verbally abused by two of my ex-partners in a same-sex relationship, I need to speak out and remind our community that Madison is not a place for domestic violence, that Madison needs leadership that will hold people accountable, that Madison needs that support. All of us, everyone who has ever suffered domestic violence, need that support of leadership in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Bonnie Rowe of District 11. Bonnie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Common Council. I would like to publicly acknowledge my support for survivors of domestic violence and abuse. As stated in your resolution, domestic violence or intimate partner violence is a pattern of behaviors used by one partner to maintain power and control of another partner. Thank you for also including coercion, emotional abuse and psychological abuse in this resolution. The timing of this resolution comes as no surprise to me. I will skip a few of the remarks I was going to make in light of them not being relevant specifically to this resolution. But I would like to agree with a statement that the mayor made last Thursday when she said, "The city supports survivors and the organizations in our community working against domestic violence. We take reports of sexual harassment and violence seriously and push for legal accountability in all cases." I really agree with you, Madam Mayor. I am all for legal accountability. And to obtain legal accountability, we have in this country a process, due process. And that is how we need to deal with allegations of abuse so that they can be properly addressed, held accountable and justice brought to all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All the registrants we have wanting to speak on this item. Just like to take the privilege of the chair to thank all of the survivors in the room and within the sound of this meeting, those of you who shared your stories and those of you who didn't. It's a difficult choice either way. And I want to acknowledge the courage that it takes to be a survivor to begin with and particularly to speak and share your story publicly. You should not have to, but we are honored that you chose to share your stories in this space. So thank you to all of the survivors here. The honoring resolution has been moved and seconded. Alder Bennett? You can speak to the honoring resolution. Yes. Go ahead, Alder Bennett.
Okay. I just wanted to take a moment myself to say thank you to everyone that came out to speak on this. And we unequivocally should believe survivors. And as... I hate that I have to even say that as a survivor myself. But as a survivor myself, this is very hard-hitting. And I know that many people in this room and council members themselves have experienced violence. And to me, it is quite disappointing that we exist in systems that have been built around protecting abusers. And to me, the way this honoring resolution has been gone about, although I'm so glad that we had the space and opportunity to hear from all of you, is a public display of protecting abusers. And it is absolutely infuriating that, just as Dana said, empty words without action is nothing but a false sense of security. This is that. This resolution is that. No offense. Yeah.
Alders, I'll remind us of decorum. You are not supposed to speak to each other. You're supposed to address the chair.
No offense, Chair.
None is taken by the chair.
So, I want to take a moment for us to both empower survivors and acknowledge that people that perpetrate abuse can be around us in our everyday lives. They are our parents, our friends, our siblings, our coworkers. Our colleagues on the city council can perpetuate violence as well. And so when we say believe survivors, we must also believe that people can be abusers. And so when I hear and see situations, time and time again, where this city protects abusers, not just in this instance, but in previous instances, it's making my blood boil. And just as Shady said, there is no reconciliation without truth and accountability. I don't think that there can be reconciliation without that truth and accountability until folks own up to what they need to. So, I will leave you with this. As a survivor of abuse, as a survivor of childhood abuse, and someone that even has a relationship with my abuser, I can say that honestly, one of the most healing moments I ever had was when my perpetrator looked me in the eye and told me, "I did this to you, and for that, I am sorry." And I think that an apology means a lot. And a public apology, especially if this is a public matter, means a whole lot more. And with that, I know that I am registered as a sponsor of this resolution, but seeing the other sponsors, I cannot in good faith want to be a part of that list. So please take me off of the sponsorship list while I will support the resolution itself.
Thank you, Alder. The clerk will note to remove Alder Bennett. Thank you. I just need to take a point of process. We are under a tornado watch. If that becomes a warning, it hasn't yet become a warning on my phone, then we will assess the situation. There is shelter in this building. So I just want you to all be aware that we may need to take a moment and recess the meeting if we think that we are in the path of a tornado because we don't have enough going on tonight. So, we'll move on to Alder Bennett. So, we'll move on to Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I chose not to sign on to the resolution, and I say that because publicly, I have to really say why I could not. My spirit would not allow me to sign on to the resolution. That does not mean that everything that I heard, I understood and it touched me. And the reason that I'm speaking is that I can say that I am a survivor of not only domestic abuse, but also incest as well. And so, when you look at a person, the person may not look like you think they should. You might not be able to see the scars that they have had to heal over, and for me to be able to speak my truth at this point, there was a lot of healing that had to go on for me. One of the first things that I did was I confronted my abuser, who started molesting me at age four. And what he said is that, "No, that was not me. Didn't do it, but I didn't do it for him. I did it so that I can heal." And because of that, I can share my story, because before, I thought it was my fault, something that I did, and I was a terrible person. That is stuck in the minds when that happens to you. And so, I chose not to sign the resolution, because my spirit just would not allow me to do that. But please make note that I heard everything that you said, and I absolutely support what has been presented before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to apologize, because I will head out right after this statement to continue supporting my staff member in an event tonight. But I do want to just say, elected officials speaking to the resolution oftentimes take moments to center themselves, and an honor resolution to center domestic violence survivors, that's the purpose, to center domestic violence survivors, to center the folks who are here sharing their stories, to center the folks who are spending an inconsiderable amount of time helping people. Folks like myself, I would imagine Alda Curry as well, who work in nonprofits or have previously worked in nonprofits, we spend a lot of time trying to get folks out of difficult situations. So, for me, this is not a night to center myself, to center my story, to center my work, and I encourage any Alder...the good thing about an honor resolution is that we don't all have to decide to sign on, right? We can decide what we want to do with any honor, anything before us, we can make a decision about it. So, what I really implore folks to do is not to come to council on an honor resolution with platitudes. If you feel so compelled and that what something different should be happening, we also, each one of us, has an opportunity to take a step to say, "This is what we're going to do as an individual, as cosponsors, as a body," whether it be to center someone, whatever the steps that we want to take. So, because folks are, you know, because some people or some Alders are in disagreement with the honor resolution, which is perfectly fine, you know, that's your thing, then it sounds like we have Alders who are also in support of centering maybe someone on our body. That's more than platitudes. To be action-oriented over platitudes is what the community needs from us, more than us taking an opportunity to center ourselves and someone else's story. So, thank you. You all have a good night. And I do want to, I'm sorry, I know I'm super out of order, but I do want to just thank everybody who came to share their stories or personal stories. I absolutely appreciate each and one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. That's not all of order in the least. I don't have any other Alders wishing to speak. Alder Knox, and then Alder Latimer Burris. So close.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to say a few things. You know, domestic violence is not only just a serious issue in our community, but very few families are unaffected by it, and we know this. So, I just want to appreciate the people who came out to speak, the agencies in particular who support victims of domestic violence, and just say that I think this council realizes we need even more agencies and support for it. And not that it matters, but I did let the clerk know to add me as a sponsor to this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, first of all, thank you to all the people that came out and spoke. I am a little disappointed that we don't have a clear process for due process, which simply means hearing, evaluating, figuring out to do, and moving forward. For me, due process hangs on two things from two ends.
Alder, the resolution doesn't speak to process within the city?
Yes, so, I'm talking about, so if you'll let me finish, I'm talking about the commentary that speaks to the process. It's real quick.
The commentary is not relevant, Alder. It's the resolution that's before us that you need to address.
Okay, so I'm glad that the resolution was put forward, and I hope that we have due process, because I'm coming from the standpoint of, without due process, there's plenty of people who have hung from trees, cities burned, and due process allowed the person who chose to wait me at six...
Alder, please address the resolution in front of us.
...move, not be held accountable. So, I want to, I just want to say that. That's very important, and maybe that will be the actions beyond the resolution which I supported.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item five, and we'll move on to item six, which is Legisstar 82918 proclaiming April 30th, 2024, as National Therapy Animal Day in the city of Madison. We have no one here to receive this resolution. President Curry, a motion, please. Alder Figueroa Cole, a second, please. It's been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded, and we do proclaim April 30th, 2024, as National Therapy Animal Day in the city of Madison. All right, so I'm just going to take a moment to, we've been doing okay so far, but basically because we don't have our system, you do have to raise your hands in order for me to see you and call on you, and you do indeed have to press the button on your mic to unmute and then mute yourselves again. Our next item of business is the election of council president and vice president, and so I will yield the chair to President Curry to preside over that election. Alder Vitiver first?
Might we take a 10-minute recess before we start that process?
Alder Vitiver will move a 10-minute recess. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Moved and seconded to take a 10-minute recess. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of a 10-minute recess? Seeing no objection, it's 8:02. We'll be back at 8:12. We are two minutes out, two minutes out from coming back. Encourage Alders on Zoom to make their way back to their computers, and Alders in the building to make their way back to the table. We are one minute out. All right, if I can have Alders take their seats, please. Okay, I will call the meeting back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett is here. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. President Curry?
Here.
President Curry is present. Alder Duncan?
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field?
Here.
Alder Field is present. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole is present. Alder Govendarajan?
Here.
Alder Govendarajan is here. Alder Uguere?
Here.
Alder Uguere is here. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney is here. Alder Knox?
Here.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris?
Here.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison is excused. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Here.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayadze?
Present.
Alder Mayadze is present. Alder Rommel?
Present.
Alder Rommel is present. Alder Tischler?
President.
Alder Tischler is present. Alder Viver?
Here.
Alder Viver is present. Alder Vittervir? Alder Vittervir is present. Alder Wehalye?
Here.
Alder Wehalye is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Now, I will turn the chair over to Council President Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am happy to take us into the election of our next council president and vice president. The president, the election of the common council president will come first once we...let me actually look across the room and get in eye that I thought someone besides myself was going to provide introduction. I can do if not, I'm not seeing anybody look at me. All right. So I'm just going to recap for members of the public and as well as Alders who may have missed the email about how we'll be proceeding with tonight's elections. Nominations will be taken from the floor. No second is required, but after that, any discussion, nominations are closed. We will go into voting. We are using an electronics ballot tonight. And the winning candidate must receive at least 11 votes. If no candidate receives 11 votes, additional rounds will be conducted until one candidate attains 11 votes. If there are more than two candidates initially nominated, all candidates remain on the successive ballots unless they withdraw from the election. And as I mentioned before, after the election of president, nominations for and the election of vice president will occur using the same process. Before I take nominations, are there any questions, clarification that the body needs about our process? All right. I have to admit, I'm a little distracted having the meeting in here and voices carry in this space. So I will open the floor to any nominations for council president for the term of 2024 to 2020, spring 2024 to 2025. Alder Revere?
Thank you, President Curry. It is my honor to nominate Alder Jeanette Figueroa Cole to the office of president.
Thank you, Alder Revere. That's a nomination for Alder Figueroa Cole. Let me actually reread. Do we have any other nominations for council president or do we take it nomination at a time? No second is required. So let me reread. Nominations will be taken from the floor. Alders may nominate another alder or themselves. No second is required, and after any discussion, nominations are closed. So still a nomination period for council president. We have nomination for Alder Figueroa Cole, Alder Latimer Burris.
Yes, President Curry, I would like to nominate Alder Bill Tischler.
All right, we have Alder Bill Tischler as a nomination. We, no second is required, Alders. Give another call for nominations for council presidents. Hearing and seeing, no additional nominations. The nominations before us, let me ask first, Alders Figueroa Cole and Alders Tischler, do you accept these nominations? Alder Figueroa Cole says yes. Alder Tischler also accepts the nomination. Our nominees of Alder Revere and Alder Latimer Burris, would Alder Revere, since you were first, would you like to speak to your nomination? Vice President Figueroa Cole, would you like to speak to the nomin, no? Help, please. Okay.
Okay, so first, I want to thank Alder Curry for representing the council as council president this past year. I also want to thank those who volunteered to serve in CCEC with us and to all the Alders who made time to join us throughout some of the meetings. Together and in partnership with the council office, the mayor's office, and agencies across the city, we worked and supported process improvements for maintaining, for managing the agenda, continued to move forward, building a framework to improve and standardize BCCs, streamline honor and resolutions requests, and strengthen the new alder onboarding materials. These are just a few examples of the work prioritized this year. My decision to seek this, to seek this seat is not rooted on the, on the council's tradition of moving to VP from president, nor is based on any sense of entitlement, entitlement due to my current position. Rather, it is driven by my unwavering belief in continuity, and my confidence in my ability to tackle process improvements and complex issues such as the budget. I am in perpet, a perpetual learner, gaining new insights almost daily, and I'm always eager to share that knowledge. If I'm elected as the council president, I will continue to uphold the council, council offices initiatives to document processes and procedures, advance and standardization of BCCs, and foster engagement among us and with the wider community. During, during this challenging 2025 budget, my primary focus will be engaging the often overlooked marginalized communities, ensuring their voices are heard and their needs are met in city affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Figueroa Cole. I did get a clarification when I asked for help, so thank you, Attorney Haas, but we are now in discussion now that nominations have been closed, so I will see if Alder Tischler has remarks, but members of the body can also speak on the nominations at hand.
Yeah, thank you. No, I just feel that we need to have choices, even though it's not a good choice sometimes. Well, you know, when I joined this council, you know, I, you know, I walked into a new environment for me, but it's also an environment where I oftentimes get asked to, to move in into different environments in my work and find, try to find common, common ground. I think it's important for all of us to find ways to, to get along. I think it's also very important to, to support, you know, dissenting voices. I think, and to me, that's always a sign of a very healthy democracy, when, when people feel comfortable enough to, to disagree, to, to raise a dissenting opinion on it. And I look around this room and I see many people who I agree with wholeheartedly, sometimes I disagree, but it never, never do I have a point where I don't feel comfortable raising a concern or, or raising an item that I, where I disagree. And I think that's really what's important, is, is that we can disagree with, with the policies, the ideas, but, but not with each other. And, and so I, so I think, I think I, what I can hopefully bring is, is a way to bring our, our, many of us together. I think right now, we're, we're coming on, upon some, some very challenging months ahead, and I hope that, that I can, can kind of be an individual who can, who can bring in all, all, all different voices together to the table. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other members want to make comment, discussion? All right, if there is no objection, I'd like to, from the board, body, I'd like to make a comment. So it's not either in support for either candidate, but just speaking, coming to the conclusion of my term in council leadership, which last year, consecutive, I was vice president and president. And I wasn't an alder before COVID, so I don't know how that worked, and I probably wouldn't have survived. But a lot of processes, a lot of things needed to shift, obviously, for COVID. And my walking away message to those of you who have not yet, sorry, I'm a little nervous still. Those of you who have not yet been in leadership and are considering, the learning curve is steep, just like our jobs is. And Alder Figueroa Cole, Vice President Figueroa Cole, in her comments spoke to the common tradition that I think it is of the common council, when the sitting vice president is still a part of the body, that they're assumed to become the president. And I appreciate your comments on that. I would just like to share from my perspective how difficult it is, especially considering some of the dynamics that both Alders spoke to, that are before us in our city, that we have been working together on a year or four, of the continuity of not just the council president presiding when the mayor can't chair common council meetings, organizing the agenda and providing kind of a higher level leadership, but not speaking on behalf of us all. It's also having relationships and community with the council office staff that support all of the work that all of us do. It's also about establishing deeper relationships with department heads and other city staff that you'll interface with at a higher level than I think, unless you, you know, are like some of our peers who go above and beyond and are amazing at what they do. But for the common alder, I would say, I felt like I was put into spaces to develop better relationships or deeper relationships than just transactional at the council. So I guess I say that as we go into our vote, not to say tradition and status quo was always the right thing to do, but in terms of process procedure, not losing ground from what we've been gaining and lessons learned and unlearned from our time in the council, whether brief or longer, that, that process is also a piece that I wish we would have been able to talk more about what it means to be in council leadership and maybe have a discussion about that, because I think we all have different interpretations. So thank you for your time. I will turn it over to, I believe, the clerk's office to take us through instructions to vote for council president.
All righty. Okay, so all of you should have received instructions from Jennifer for the polling tonight. Let me just double check that I, okay. And I will review those instructions right now as well, just so that everyone is clear. So the first election will be for the president of the committee. The email reads, the clerk's office will use poll everywhere to conduct this year's council leadership elections. You can vote from an internet browser on your smartphone, laptop, desktop, or tablet. To vote in both elections, see the link in that email. And here are a couple of important steps. Again, this is all in the email, but just to reiterate, number one, do not share the link with anyone else. We have sent you a link, or we have sent everyone participating in the election that link. Sharing the link will harm the election's integrity, and it may result in the election results being nullified. Number two, to cast your vote, you will only need to click or tap a response. There's no submit button, and you, you will see your response highlighted on the page. It is possible to change your vote. To do so, you will need to click on clear last response, and then you can make a new choice. Again, you do not have to submit your vote. And once all of the votes have come in, in that three-minute period, we will share the tally. And I will make sure first that everyone has gotten a chance to cast their vote or their abstention from voting. All right. Does anyone have any questions before we go ahead and get started?
I just had a real quick question. So when we hit this link, that's it, we're live? Or can we hit it now, just to make sure it comes up?
Yeah, you can log in, because you won't see it until we open the actual poll. So go ahead and click that, just to make sure you can get in. You'll probably see it, it's just going to be like a blank screen.
Okay. Yep, I am just going to load that real quickly. Okay, one more moment. It, so there was a, okay, does, okay, right, so we will, once everyone has it up and is ready, we will unlock it, and then that will be the start of the three minutes. So I will wait. Is there anyone who does not have it pulled up on their screen? Okay. Yep, okay, so Jennifer will unlock it right now. Okay, we are at the one-minute mark, one-minute warning. All right, the three minutes have elapsed, so Jen will download the results, and then I will pan to that screen shortly. Okay. Oops, sorry. Okay, here are the results.
So we have Alder Figueroa Cole with 11 votes, Alder Tischler with eight, with 11 votes. That means our new council president is President Figueroa Cole. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. That will move us along to elections for our council vice president. I will open the floor now to any nominations. Alder Conklin I saw first, and then Alder Wehaley, please.
I would like to nominate Alder John Duncan, please.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wehaley? Alder Wehaley nominates Alder Harrington McKinney, thank you. All right. Going to give a second. I've totally apologized to the two Alders who are virtual with us, so if you all are also included, so I'll pause and see if there are any nominations virtually. I'm not seeing or hearing any other from the room. All right. Oh, Alder Knox. Yes, I, I was able to touch base with both of our virtual Alders. Thank you. No nomination, though. No nomination, Alder Knox? Okay. All right, not seeing or hearing any nominations in the room or online. I will close nominations for vice presidents and remind you that the candidates before us are Alder John Duncan and Alder Barbara Harrington McKinney. And I will open the floor to discussion, which can include remarks from our nominees, but let me first make sure, Alder Duncan, do you accept the nomination? Alder Duncan accepts. Alder Har, Ald- Alder Duncan accepts. Alder Harr...oh. A head nod is universal, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, do you accept the nomination? Alder Harrington McKinney accepts. Alright, now into discussion. Alder Duncan.
Thank you, President Curry. My decision to run for common council vice president is rooted in my passion for serving our community and steadfast dedication to the principles that make our city vibrant and inclusive. I believe one of the cornerstones of an effective governance is ensuring smooth transition for newly-elected officials. Our previous leadership has developed an effective onboarding process for new Alders. I am committed to working with leadership and council staff to further develop the process in order to provide new Alders the resources and support they need to hit the ground running and serving their constituents with excellence from day one. I believe behind every successful council is a dedicated team of staff members who work tirelessly to ensure the smooth functioning of our legislative body. I pledge to prioritize the well-being and professional development of our staff, providing them with the resources and the support they need to excel in their roles and serve our community with distinction. I believe in a diverse and vibrant city like ours, it is imperative that every voice is heard and every perspective is valued. As vice president, I will be a champion for inclusivity and diversity, working to create spaces and opportunity for all members of our community to participate in the decision-making process and have their voices heard. I believe collaboration is also a cornerstone of an effective governance. I take pride in having built respectful relationships with each of my colleagues on council. As vice president, I will continue to foster a spirit of cooperation and collaboration among the members of our legislative body, putting aside our differences in favor of the common good. Our constituents need leaders who are willing to set aside personal agendas and work together to address the pressing challenges facing our city. Through collaboration, we can develop innovative solutions to our most pressing problems and move our council forward in a spirit of unity and progress. Together, let's build a brighter future for our city, where all voices are heard, all perspectives are valued, and all members of our community have the opportunity to thrive. I truly hope that you will vote for me and that I have your support for vice president. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Duncan. Any other Alders wishing to speak? Alder Harrington McKinney?
I read this week that the statue of Vell Phillips is scheduled to be erected in June 2024. I have been inspired by her story when first introduced to who she was and what she stood for. First black woman to graduate from the UW Madison Law School. First black woman elected to the Democratic National Committee. First black person to be elected to a statewide office in Wisconsin as Secretary of State. First black person on the Milwaukee Common Council. First female judge. First person of color to be commemorated with a state Capitol statue. I am...I am running for common council leadership because of those who fought to open the doors of access. Our county lacks diversity of ideas, a commitment to listen, to inform, and engage the people who elected us, as well as those who voted against us. We have the most diverse council in history, but we are completely divided. I want to be a catalyst for action. The definition of catalyst refers to something that has spurred somebody into action, into taking an action. That inspired me to run. What does it mean if a person is a catalyst? It is a person or thing that participates an event in an event for change. A person whose talk, enthusiasm, and energy causes others to be more friendly, enthusiastic, and agreeable. I'm running for common council leadership because of those who fought, again, to open the doors to access. Our council lacks diversity of ideas, as I said, a commitment to listen to, inform, and engage the people who elected, as well as those who voted against them. Again, we are the most diverse council in history, but we are completely divided. There is no middle space at the table, no space to work together on issues. You are either inside the inner circle or outside of the inner circle. I solicit your help. What's missing for you? What should this leadership look like? I pull together the City of Madison's mission values. Vision: Our Madison, inclusive, innovative, and thriving. Mission: Our mission is to provide the highest quality service for the common good, for our residents and visitors. Values: Equity. We are committed to fairness, justice, and equal outcomes for all. Civic engagement: We believe in transparency, openness, and inclusivity. We will protect freedom of expression and engagement. We are committed to creating a community where all can thrive and feel safe. Shared prosperity: We are dedicated to creating a community where all are able to achieve economic success and social mobility. Stewardship: We will care for our natural economic, fiscal, and social resources. As VP, it is the sergeant's, it is the vice president's responsibility as to act as sergeant of arms and to assist the presiding officer with the decorum of the space. It is also the responsibility of the vice president to support the elected president. The question that I was most asked is, is that, are you able to work with whomever is elected president? I am committed. I respect leadership. I absolutely can and will participate and cooperate with anyone, the person who's elected, and we've already elected a president. Why am I stepping forward? I'm stepping forward because we must create an out-facing vision of what we really are. I think we have, I won't say we've lost our way, because we're all good people wanting to serve this city in the most dynamic way, but somehow we've lost our way. And the community outside of this chamber has recognized that. We can do better. We will do better. And when we talk about the diversity of thought, it does not mean that we will disagree or agree all the time, but it does mean that we will have the opportunity to have all voices in the room, all voices at the table, all voices included in the conversation. We are going through some, we'll be going through some very tough and challenging times, and we must decide that we're all going to put our shoulder to the plow and make sure that this city is absolutely a city that all can thrive, all can feel comfortable, and all can have their space. That is why I'm running. I'm running for community engagement. I'm running to continue what has been established and set up by the previous administration, to build on that, that superb job, yes. But I'm also running that we may exchange information among us so that we're all on the page and understand what's happening. I'm running because the community needs to be aware and educated on options of why we're doing A, why we're doing B. I put my name forward so that I can be a part of the solution, and I make that commitment. I did not call and ask people to vote for me, and I did not do that, because what I wanted to say is to make sure that my voice got into the record and the passion that I have for the City of Madison and this council. We can and will do better, and our communities are expecting that. And I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Alder.
Not seeing any eyes from members in person. Giving a brief pause for those virtual. Alright. Seeing no further discussion. Discussion is closed, and we'll go back over to Camille.
Alright, so this election will follow the same exact rules as the president election. Jennifer has put in the nominees. I will go ahead and open that up. Sorry, it's taken me just a second. Oops. Okay, it should be loading, or loaded on your screen with the three options abstain, Alder Duncan, Alder Harrington McKinney. Does everyone see that? Has everyone pulled that up? Okay. Perfect. Alright, so Jen will now...okay, I see Alder Rummel, head nod, great. Okay, Jen will now open up that. Again, we have three minutes, and Jen, go ahead. Okay, one-minute warning. One more minute until the poll closes. Alright, three minutes are over. Voting has ended. I will pan to the responses.
Alright, so we have Alder John Duncan with 12 votes, and Alder Barbara Harrington McKinney with seven, zero abstentions. That means Alder John Duncan is our vice president. Congratulations. Alright, Madam Mayor is resuming chair. Thanks, everyone.
Alright. Thank you, former President Curry, and thank you for your service. Alright. Are there any disclosures or recusals from any members of the body on the balance of tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Figaro Cole?
A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including a public hearings, except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which, as Alders, have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda... agenda items, with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. The following are agenda items that are supermajority items. The supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 51, Legisstar number 82677, approving Park Commission pedestrian appointee and resident appointee to the subcommittees of the Board of Parks Commissioners. That's a 14-item vote. Agenda item 72, Legisstar 82987, authorizing two non-competitive purchases of services, of service contracts for enhanced structural assessment, repairs, and maintenance to the ball's conservatory structure at Old Brick Botanical Gardens at 3330 Edward Avenue. Agenda item 75, Legisstar 82121, approving a certified survey map of property owned by St. John's Lutheran Church located at 310 to 322 East Washington Avenue. Agenda item number 83, Legisstar number 82455, authorizing the City of Madison on behalf of the Dane County Continuum of Care to accept $100,000 in additional EH funds from the State of Wisconsin Department of Administration, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment with focused counseling and the Salvation Army of Dane County to provide services using the additional funds, and amending the Community Development Division's 2024 adopted operating budget to recognize the additional grant revenue and commensurate expenditures. Agenda item number 85, Legisstar 82470, amending the Parks Division's 2024 adopted capital budget using golf revenue reserves for the purchase of specialized golf maintenance equipment for the City of Madison Golf courses. Agenda item number 91, Legisstar item 82564, is a substitute, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a developmental agreement and authorizing an amendment to the 2024 capital budget to fund $1,669,000 on tax increment financial loan to Vermillion Madison LLC, or its assigns, to upgrade sanitation, sewer, and associated cost and construct approximately 328 units of market-rate housing and approximately 361 parking stalls located at 1617 Sherman Avenue. Agenda item number 82, Legisstar 82434, amending Section 12.13313 of the Madison General Ordinance related to towing charge for Fisher to correct inconsistencies and improper references in Madison General Ordinances constituting a 2024 City Attorney Revisors' Ordinance. Agenda item number 93, Legisstar number 88433, approving a certified survey map of property owned by Cherokee Park, Inc., located at 5105 North Sherman Avenue and 1904 Wheeler Road. And agenda item number 94, Legisstar 81944, approving a certified survey map of property owned by the Madison Square Storage LLC, located at 2230 Pennsylvania Avenue. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 84, Legisstar 82456, establishing guidance for developing the 2025 city budget. The recommended action from Finance and President Kerry, it's for, to adopt the substitute. Agenda items excluded either by request of Alders or speaker registers by noon on April 16. Agenda item number 13, Legisstar 81952, amending Sections 28.151 and 28.211 of the Madison General Ordinances to allow accessory dwelling units for properties with up to eight dwelling units and remove owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. We have speakers and Alder Latimer-Berris requested exclusion. Agenda item 24, Legisstar item 82695, approving plans, specifications, and schedule of assessments for Stevens Street Resurfacing Assessment District 2024. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number 25, Legisstar 82696, approving plans, specifications, and schedule of assessment for Hermana Street and Union Street Reconstruction Assessment District for 2024. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number 77, Legisstar 82079, directing the Finance Department to issue a report analyzing city operating budgets from 2019 to 2024 and calling on the state legislature to authorize local sales tax options. Alder Latimer-Berris requested exclusion. Agenda item number 84, Legisstar number 82456, establishing guidance for developing the 2025 city budget. Alder Harrington McKinney requested exclusion, and we have speakers registered. Agenda item 105, Legisstar number 82889, amending Section 3.04 and Section 3.549B of the Madison General Ordinances related to the Employee Assisting Program to change the title EAP Administrator to EAP Director and add EAP Director to the list of non-civil services CG21 managerial employees. This is an introduction of new business for referral without debate. Alder Revia excluded for the purpose of adding a referral to the Finance Committee for May 6. Speakers? I'll get it. Agenda item number 48, I don't have the legisstar number, amending Sections of 2025 General Ordinance related to animals that cause injuries. We have registers, speakers. And then agenda items with corrections, I'm sorry, agenda items introduced from the floor. We have Legisstar 83009, supporting the effective dissemination of funds provided through the Violence Prevention Services for at-risk apartment buildings amendment. President Curry requested this to be returned to council on May 7. And agenda items with corrections. Agenda item number 110, Legisstar number 82973, repealing and recreating Section 33.24 of the Madison General Ordinance related to the Urban Design Commission to implement Phase One of Plan Multi-Phase revisions to the UDC ordinance. This is an introduction of new business for referral without debate. Correct referral dates to Plan Commission will be May 20, 2024, to Urban Design Commission of May 8, 2024, and back to Common Council on June 4, 2024. Mayor, that's the agenda.
Thank you, President Figaro Cole. Are there any other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Revier?
Thank you, Mayor. I ask for separation for purposes of adding a committee referral to the item just introduced or about to be introduced as part of the consent motion.
Legisstar 83009?
Thank you, yes. File number 83009, Mayor. In the alternative, perhaps we could include that as part of the consent motion.
What referrals would you like, Alder?
Simply to refer that resolution to the Finance Committee meeting of May 6.
Finance of May 6. Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Can I dispute that?
We'll try it as part of the consent agenda. Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Alder Revier. Anything additional? Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers? Alder, can you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Thanks for the reminder. A couple residents registered to speak on item number 48, but for some reason or another, that was not pulled.
It will be, I've noted that, Alder.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 48, yes. Are there any other items that Alders would like to have separated from the consent agenda? Alder Conklin? Can you use the mic, please?
We're not used to this. It's not, I just have a question because we have already approved the money for the one that we're introducing for the floor, 83009. It's just how we have to reword the wording so that the violence prevention folks can get the money. It's just sitting in violence prevention, and it's not letting us give it to the Operation Fresh Start, the three or four folks that they want to give the money to that's already there helping. So this is all we're doing. We already approved the money. We gave them the $68,000. So this is just for us to release it to them so they can use it.
Is that a clarification, Alder?
The clarification is, why would it have to be sent to the Finance Committee if they already have their money?
So Alders can request referrals. You're free to oppose the referral if you'd like or to discuss the issue with the maker of the motion. But the referral's been requested. Alder Revier?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but just to respond, if I might.
We're not in debate.
Right. The intention would be that it would stay on the same schedule in the Common Council meeting of May 7, the next day, 24 hours later. If that wasn't clear from my request?
Thank you, Alder. That's a good clarification. So the referral would be to Finance on the 6 and to the council on the 7. Is there any other items? Alder Bahili?
69, Board of Public Work Annual Report, they can do the presentation.
Item 69. I am not sure if we have a presentation on that, Alder. But if you have questions...
I can follow up with them.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional items that Alders wish to see separated from the consent agenda? Seeing no others, let me review that again. We'll start with the items that are supermajority items. The following items require 14 votes. Item 51, 72, 75, 82, 93, and 94. The following items require 15 votes. Item 83, 85, and 91. The following items are excluded from the consent agenda. Items 13, 24, 25, 48, 77, 84. Note, the motion will be the substitute. And if there is no objection, we will adopt the additional referrals on 105, which would be a referral to Finance Committee of 5624, and the introduction from the floor, Legisstar 83009, which again would be an referral to Finance Committee on 5624, returning to council on 5724. Let me pause on that item. Is there any objection to adding those two referrals to the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, those two referrals will remain on the consent agenda. And then we'll just note the correction on item 110. The correct referral dates are Plan Commission 520, Urban Design 58, and Common Council 64. Should I go through the list again? No. All right. Then President Figaro Cole, a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, that vote will be recorded. And we will move on to public comment. All right, our first item with registrants wishing to speak is item 13, amending Sections of the Madison General Ordinances to allow accessory dwelling units for properties with up to eight dwelling units and remove owner occupancy requirements for accessory dwelling units. On item 13, our first registrant is Ben Nofsky of District 11, to be followed by Josh Olson, to be followed by Douglas Carlson. Do we have Ben?
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Hi, yeah. So I just wanted to say that I support incremental housing efforts. ADUs are one of the options that are going to help residents organically increase density in their neighborhood. And they get a supplemental income source from this and provide more housing. The owner occupancy limits, lending options for these folks. And so we've really seen, like, limited opportunity with only, like, 32 ADUs being permitted. So I really think we need to enable as many tools as possible for residents to participate in incremental housing for their neighborhoods. And this is a good step to take. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Josh Olson of District 20, to be followed by Douglas Carlson, to be followed by Will Okowitz. Josh?
Hello?
Go ahead.
My name is Josh Olson. I'm from District 20. I'm a member of the national organization called Strong Towns. We believe in creating prosperous and resilient cities. There are five campaigns: Safe and Productive Streets, Ending Parking Subsidies and Mandates, Incremental Housing, Transparent Local Accounting, and Ending Highway Expansion. I want to speak to incremental housing and the transparent local accounting. I got an interest in housing abundance and missing middle housing by watching and reading a bunch about missing middle housing and also the suburban pattern of development. For those that don't know, that is kind of the sprawl in single-family zoning that we see a lot of in Madison. This has contributed to bankrupting our cities as they have to deal with high infrastructure costs. Meanwhile, the ability to build value-adding and community-adding housing is illegal due to zoning. There is an opportunity to build safe, prosperous, happy, and thriving cities. These are things that I want, along with my girlfriend and my friends and family. They are normal people. They don't wait three hours to speak at public comments while there's a potential tornado watch. But I am here. I am here to speak for them as they try and get that prosperous, safe city. One thing that came up recently in the last couple of years that I've been here, six of my friends have lived in Madison, and they have now found homes outside of Madison. They're in Manona, they're in Stoughton, they're in Pittsburgh. They made the normal and rational decision looking at the Madison housing market, and they said it's not affordable to live here. So I'm passionate about housing. I want to see more of it in Madison, and it starts here. Two years ago, I spoke at my first meeting. It was at Plan Commission, and it was about the first ADU ordinance. So I'm glad that we're here, and we're looking to revise it and improve it. I think that it's possible to do that by removing the owner occupancy requirement and adding places where we can build it. It really does start with the barrier to entry at this point, because we've only had 32 of these permitted. So I would like to see opportunities for homeowners to build their own, like, greater property value, and then also to allow people in the city different opportunities to live. Kind of like, maybe someone like a graduate student who's looking to rent, but doesn't necessarily need the high-rise apartments. The owner occupancy requirement is also critical, considering that life can change quickly, and requiring someone to live in a home when maybe something happens where they have to move can cause problems where you have a good tenant who hasn't done anything wrong, and they have to get evicted because the person moves. So I think this is a crucial step for solving Madison's housing shortage. This is the ground for floor reform. I'm hoping that we pass this and we look at future reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next registrant is Douglas Carlson of District 13, to be followed by Will Okowits, to be followed by Darren Wasniewski. Douglas? Don't appear to have Douglas in the room. Do we have Douglas on Zoom?
Mayor, there's no person in attendance by that name.
Thank you. If not, then Will Okowits of District 2, to be followed by Darren Wasniewski, to be followed by Eric Viem. Do we have Will? If not, then I know that Darren is here. Darren Wasniewski of District 10, representing ARP Wisconsin.
Good evening, Mayor Rhodes Conway, Council President Figaro Cole, and members of Council. My name is Darren Wasniewski, and I am an employee of ARP Wisconsin. I spend the majority of my time working with communities around this state, just encouraging housing options and working on legislation to promote that in their communities, missing middle housing in particular. Usually, I'm at the task of finding a local resident to speak in this position, because not being a resident of those communities, I don't feel it's right for me to come in and say that. So I'm honored to be able to say this as a proud resident of the City of Madison, that ARP wholeheartedly supports this change to the ordinances regarding accessory dwelling units here in Madison. ARP established its first guidance on local ordinances and state ordinances with accessory dwelling units in 2000. This was amended in the year 2020 after our large national experience and what we saw. And I can tell you that no owner occupant requirement, as well as allowing them in a variety of zoning districts, is in that model ordinance as the epitome of where you want to go. We look at this in two camps. You know, with the variety of zoning districts, we look at it as support falls into equal treatment and financial implications. And so, you know, we often say, as we look at it, we don't have requirements for other types of housing that require an owner occupant. If somebody moves out of their single-family residential unit and moves elsewhere and turns it into a rental unit, we have nothing that says they need to have somebody living there. That owner occupant has to be there. We feel this is unfair treatment under the law. And with respect to the financial implications, we've often heard that, and I've had my own experience in exploring creation of an accessory dwelling unit, financing is a challenge. Banks will not finance them if you have an owner occupant requirement in the event that they need to foreclose on this property. If they foreclose it, who's the owner that's going to live there? Now, chances are, the city is not going to be able, you know, is going to have a tough time to enforce that, but banks want to mitigate the risk, and so they don't want to take those chances. And therefore, it's just easier for them not to offer financing for that rather than go for that challenge. So with that, and speaking on behalf of ARP Wisconsin and a resident of the City of Madison, we strongly encourage you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Eric Viem of District 13, to be followed by Michael Leeson. Do we have Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm real mayor and members of the Common Council. My name is Eric Viem, and I'm speaking in support of the Council allowing ADUs on multifamily, non-owner-occupied properties. I want to start by appreciating the leadership of the Alders that have sponsored this ordinance, and appreciate the Plan Commission and Housing Strategy Committee on their unanimous votes in support of this ordinance. And then finally, appreciate the work of staff in its preparation. I work professionally supporting community action on climate, energy, and sustainability. I own a non-owner-occupied, multifamily property on Carver Street that is providing housing for a single mother and two young working couples. Our tenants love their home and their neighborhood. ADUs being allowed on multifamily, non-owner-occupied properties such as mine create the possibility to gently add density to our neighborhoods. I have personal experience building an ADU on a multifamily property. This ADU has offered access to housing for a young elementary school teacher while she gets herself established in the community. ADUs add diversity to available affordable housing options, reducing pressure on workforce housing, and providing needed supply that improves overall housing affordability. Other jurisdictions with successful ADU policies reduce barriers to cost-effective construction of ADUs by providing pre-approved plans, expedited review, and elimination of fees and other requirements to the extent possible. I encourage the Common Council to unanimously support this proposed ordinance, and further, I encourage the Common Council to continue to support and adapt innovative policies that allow housing flexibility and creativity while protecting neighborhood character. Thank you for your opportunity to speak. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Michael Leeson of District 18, to be followed by Will Okowits. Do we have Michael?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for taking up this proposal. As a longtime Madison resident, our housing shortage is something I care deeply about, and as a real estate agent, it's something that I face and am surrounded by daily. Just today, I was working with a close friend to solve her own housing crisis for herself and her son. We have the opportunity to put a dent in our housing crisis by leveraging a sort of crowdsourced solution, giving primarily mom-and-pop landlords and homeowners the freedom to utilize their property to create more housing while gaining some income. We're not talking big profits here. The landlord may be able to make a few hundred dollars per month on an ADU after loan and insurance costs. This is peanuts for big developers. I think that's a fear for many people, that big developers would be kind of the primary drivers of this. They will typically avoid this kind of investment because of the complexity, the cost, and limited profit margins. It's been noted that ADU utilization has been limited in the past. Aside from cost, I believe a significant reason, as it was noted, has been that we've not seen more ADU construction in the city, has been the lack of clarity on the future market value. The Madison market just has not known how to value ADUs due to the limitation on their usage. Like, for myself, would constructing a $200,000 unit at my north side property, would it increase the value of my home by that amount? No, it wouldn't. Yeah, through this proposal, the market will have a clear method of assigning a value based on the future income potential and options without restriction, therefore leading to more ADU and housing creation. If properly utilized and even incentivized, this allowance could release a significant amount of housing for our city in a proportionate, strategic, and even tasteful manner, while keeping the money spent and earned as close to our communities as possible. Ask for your consideration and support of this proposal, and grateful for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Will Okowits of District 2.
Hello, Mayor and Common Council. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you also for coming back around to my turn. I'm speaking tonight in support of the change to the ADU ordinance. As has been mentioned before, owner occupancy requirements limit the financing options for ADUs, which are already really difficult to finance and make pencil. As we've seen in California, which removed its owner occupancy requirements statewide after a five-year test run, the result of removing owner occupancy requirements is not to enable corporations to buy up single-family homes and add ADUs. It just, the margins aren't there for big corporations. What it does do is allow people who live in the neighborhood, who live in the city, maybe who own a few properties, or even who want to build an ADU on their own property but are having difficulty getting financing. Removing owner occupancy requirements makes it easier for those people to add gentle density to their neighborhood. ADUs are a very small incremental change, and it makes sense to allow this everywhere in the city. As with, you know, this ordinance change fits with a lot of the city's past changes, which involve allowing gentle increases in density or permitted uses to make it easier for people to alleviate the housing shortage. For those reasons and many more, I urge you to support this ordinance change. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's just ask one more time if Douglas Carlson is present. I do not see that name on the Zoom. So those are the registrants on item 13. Our next item with registrants wishing to speak is item 24, Approving Plan, Specifications, and Schedule of Assessments for Stevens Street Resurfacing Assessment District. On item 24 wishing to speak is Jason Frankhauser of District 15. Do we have Jason? Does not appear that Jason is in the room.
I'm on Zoom, but new to this, and I want to speak on the Hermina, not the Stevens. I signed up for the wrong number, apparently.
All right. So we will move then to item 25, which is approving plan specifications and a schedule assessments for Hermana Street and Union Street Reconstruction Assessment District. And our first registrant will be Jason Frankhauser, to be followed by Scott Lifker. Jason, go ahead.
Hi. So I live on Union Street, near the end of the street where it comes in with Clyde Gallagher. Our street and Hermana Street make a U. Those of you who aren't familiar with it, with the bottom of the U being Clyde Gallagher, which is a shared bike path and car throughway. I don't know what you want to call that, bike lane, whatever you want to call it. And currently, I've lived here about 11 years. The condition of the road has contributed to traffic calming. I know that the gentleman who led the meeting last said that it was not at its worst condition, but it's, you can't travel very quickly down either of the streets without damaging your vehicle. So that's contributed to traffic calming. So my concern is, the plan that's being proposed is moving all the parking to one side of both streets, which obviously makes it easier to drive up and down the street, which is why we do it, which is, I understand. But I think the combination with both of them being hills and both of them having brand-new pavement will have the reverse effect of traffic calming. And my concern is that when they get to the bottom of the hill on either side, there will be, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. I mean, I think a lot of pedestrian traffic. I live on the end, so I see it. Maybe it's not a lot compared to downtown or someplace else. But there's a lot of people, you know, pushing strollers, jogging, riding their bikes. And I bike commute to work typically, and obviously not today. But anyways, so the bike path is a safe place for me to do that, and that little stretch of Clyde Gallagher is shared with cars and bikes. And my concern is that with the increased speed of the cars coming down the hill, since there won't be any traffic calming anymore, the street will be paved, it's downhill, everyone's going quicker, it's just natural. When they get to the bottom, it endangers the people who are using the bike path. And so I'd like to propose some way of maybe dividing that street to have a bike path-only section and a car-only section. Now, that would, it's only wide enough for one lane, so that would make Clyde Gallagher one way in one of the two directions.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you. It's my idea. So basically, the bottom of the U would be, I don't care which direction it is, one way for cars only. But obviously, the streets would maintain their both directions, so you could exit to Marquette on either street. But then you would only be able to go around the U in one direction, whatever direction that would be, making it safer for the people who are using the bike path to have a designated, whether it be like a curbing or like what have you.
That's your three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Our next registrant on item 25 is Scott Lifker of District 15. Scott?
Good evening. My wife and I are residents of Union Street since 2009, and I wanted to speak tonight because while we agree this part of the street needs reconstruction, some of the data used for planning appears inaccurate and other factors not considered at all. The data that notes this block of Union Street averages six vehicles parked overnight and five during the day is highly inaccurate. Since we saw that, my wife and I have been counting at various times of day and found that on weekdays, we averaged 13 vehicles parked on the street overnight and eight during the day. These numbers increased significantly on the weekends to 12 to 15 vehicles parked on the street at any given time. Per the Parking Exhibit PDF on the city website, Union Street is due to have parking on only the north side with just 17 parking spots available. I believe this also to be inaccurate, as three vehicles will not reasonably fit between any two driveways. And keeping in mind that city ordinance requires no parking within four feet of a driveway and two feet between cars. So this means only 15 parking spots, which is getting pretty close to one spot for every two houses on the block. Now, it's a pretty long block, so this is problematic for several reasons. In 2019, you built a canoe slide at the end of our street, and it gets used, mostly on weekends, and they arrive in vehicles that need to park somewhere. For years now, on Saturdays, a house near the creek is a pickup site for CSA boxes. So there's many people coming and going, all need someplace to park. Besides that, work vehicles also need to be able to park near the residence where the work is to be done. But lastly, and I think most importantly, we don't have reasonable nearby options for parking. First of all, Milwaukee Street residents already sometimes use our street for overnight overflow parking. As Jason noted, there's no parking on Clyde Gallagher Avenue. Hermana Street will likely have the same issues we're going to have because they're due to get even less parking. And the other surrounding street, Marquette Street, is hundreds of feet away from most of the houses on this block, and they already have their own residents who park there. I want you to please listen to these concerns and reconsider these plans for more reasonable parking, more reasonable and flexible parking solutions for our neighborhood. We love living here, and we'd like to continue to be able to host friends and family now and again. And we'd also like to be able to park close to our home when it's necessary to park on the street.
That's your three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other registrants on item 25, and I apologize to the Council. Were there any questions for either item 13 or 25 for registrants? Seeing none, then we will move on. The next item where we have registrants wishing to speak is item 48, Amending Sections of the Madison General Ordinances Related to Animals That Cause Injury and Requiring Them to be Restrained at All Times. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Linda Falkenstein of District 18, to be followed by Bill Luters. Linda? Is there any objection to taking them in the opposite order? Seeing no objection, we'll have Bill first of District 18 and then Linda.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, Council. First of all, it's Hermina, it's not Hermana. I lived on that street for several years, and I once wrote something about, I wasn't sure how it was pronounced, and I got a call from Hermina, the person who it was named after. That's how it should be pronounced. Members of the Council, members of the public, last May 4th, my wife Linda and I were walking in our north side neighborhood with our dog, Stella, when she was attacked by another dog. The other dog, named Roscoe, had a history of aggressive behavior, including severely biting his owner when he tried to break up a fight with another dog. On this day, Roscoe had been left unattended in his yard, no fence, no leash, no tether, just an electronic shock collar that is not supposed to be used for aggressive dogs. Roscoe had Stella in his mouth and was shaking her like a rag doll. She was seriously injured, and in my opinion, would have been killed had I not jumped on Roscoe and somehow got him to let go. Animal Service Workers with Public Health Madison Dane County find Roscoe's owner a little more than $300 and opened a dangerous dog investigation. They told me they believed Roscoe should be restrained when left outside. They told me they believed Roscoe should be restrained when left outside, but they knew this was not happening. Roscoe was still being allowed outside with just a shock collar. Public health officials said they were powerless to require Roscoe be restrained absent a dangerous dog investigation, which is really hard, dangerous dog determination, which is really hard to do. Over the next eight months, Roscoe was involved in at least two more biting incidents. In December, another dog that lived in the same house, a female named Ginger, also breached the shock collar to attack and seriously injure a neighbor's dog. And early January, Ginger attacked two people inside the residence and was stabbed to death by her owner with a kitchen knife, because that was the only way that they could get her to let go of the person she was biting. After all this, Public Health Madison Dane County closed its dangerous dog investigation of Roscoe without concluding that he was a dangerous dog. Roscoe's owner was given a warning and told that he could be declared dangerous if it attacked again. In the meantime, Roscoe is still being allowed outside with no physical restraint. I have heard from two other people after I wrote about this situation in Isthmus in the Capital Times with similar stories, including the neighbor whose dog was attacked by the other dog in Roscoe's home. They are frightened of the dogs that have attacked. They've been told that the health department is powerless even to require that the animals be restrained when left outside.
You have about thirty seconds.
The neighbor whose dog was attacked by Ginger told me that she and her family feel like hostages in their own home, having no protection from the remaining dog, Roscoe, whose owner described him to her as violent. No one should have to feel like hostages in their homes because the health department lacks the authority to address what it feels is a threat. This ordinance change passes.
That's your three minutes.
While the health workers will still be able to exercise discretion as to when to issue citations.
Thank you, Bill, that's three minutes.
But they will have a new tool to use in situations like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
I hope none of you ever have to find out what it's like to be going for a dog walk on a lovely spring day on a perfectly ordinary sidewalk in the city of Madison and suddenly see your dog attacked right in front of you. The dog that attacked my dog, Stella, was unrestrained in its yard and charged so fast. This was no dog park tussle, I have seen those. This was an attack to kill a smaller dog that the other dog saw as prey. Since that day, I drive around our neighborhood and see other people out with their dogs, and I want to jump out of the car and tell them, this, there's a house on Northport that you need to avoid, there's a dangerous block. And you have to be careful, because the regulations that you believe are in place to keep you safe do not exist. If the dog that attacked my dog is still after an eight-month investigation, still allowed to be unrestrained in its yard. I have learned that you can't trust dog owners to regulate themselves. It's easy to think that your violent dog is the exception and that what happened once won't happen again. I want to protect every dog, but that's not possible. And for one person to do, and it's not my job, it's the city and the county's job. And it hasn't been happening. This amendment to require animals that cause injury to be restrained properly is a great start to prevent other dogs from being needlessly attacked and traumatized. And so other pet owners won't have to go through what we went through. And I know that other pet owners have gone through much worse. I want to feel again that a dog walk can be a happy and tail-wagging occasion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there questions for either of the registrants on item forty-eight? Seeing none. Then the next item we have registrants wishing to speak on is Agenda Item Eighty-four, Establishing Guidance for Developing the 2025 City Budget. Our first registrant wishing to speak is Brianna, forgive me, Elinay of, please correct me, of District Fifteen, to be followed by Kathy Wiegand, to be followed by Gail Tucker. Brianna?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Common Council. My name is Reverend Brianna Elinay. I work at the Wisconsin Council of Churches, a statewide nonprofit, and I live and attend church in District Fifteen. There is a group of us gathered here tonight to speak to you about the Madison City budget. While we are here speaking for ourselves, not on behalf of our congregations and organizations, the reality is, is that we are part of these congregations and organizations and lead them in our city. We have been in conversation, there are five of us here, but we've been in conversation with many others who care about our city and who are interested about what is happening. They wanted to come, but this is a long meeting, as others have said, and it's hard to get here. So we are happy to be here. Equity and justice are core tenets of our faith. While we are not perfect, we strive to live out these values in our work as leaders in our community. We recognize that we don't operate in silos, but that policy choices have an impact and decisions by this body affect so many people. They affect the people who attend and are served by our churches, both people who are members and also just those who interact through the many ministries of our congregations and organizations, whether they be families, elderly people, people struggling with poverty, disabled people, and people formerly incarcerated. So many people are touched by the faith community in this city. As faith leaders, we are in relationship with people from a multitude of backgrounds and are often able to offer a diverse snapshot of those who live in our community. So tonight, we've coordinated as a group, we're not going to repeat ourselves, to share a bit about how we see the upcoming city budget discussion. And we are here to advocate for a fair and equitable city budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kathy Wiegand of District Nine, to be followed by Gail Tucker, to be followed by Linda Ketchum. Kathy?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Wiegand. She/her, I'm the lead pastor at First United Methodist Church downtown. My congregation is in District Two, I live in District Nine. An organization's budget is a moral document. It speaks about the values of the organization by what gets funded and by what doesn't get funded. What you as city leaders choose to fund are choices that reflect your true priorities. What is my hope for Madison? I envision a thriving, flourishing group of neighborhoods, a community that's rooted in equity and justice, a place where all people have what they need so that each can live fully into who they are called to be. In the Gospel of John, Jesus talked about not just having life, but having it abundantly. And that is my hope for everyone. I moved to Madison last summer, and I am experiencing both what makes the city great and seeing where there are some struggles. My husband and I have been exploring many neighborhood parks and green spaces. We've been getting wet in the lakes. We've been visiting the university and the vibrant arts community. We're enjoying great food and great people. My congregation is a block from the state capitol, and every Wednesday, we offer free breakfast to people who are hungry. We see poverty, mental illness, housing insecurity, and substance abuse, among other things. We hear beautiful stories, and we hear heartbreaking stories. And we know that we can't meet all of the needs of the people we see. If this budget is cut, there are going to be even more people who are falling through the cracks. We need a city budget that addresses the vast array of experiences in our community and cares for the people, the water, the trees, that pays attention to how we could all do this better together. If we want everyone to have abundant life, our budget has to reflect this. So we're asking for bold investments to be made in the city of Madison so that our communities and our people can thrive, not just survive.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gail Tucker of District Twelve, to be followed by Linda Ketchum, to be followed by Mallory Yankus. Gail?
My name is Reverend Gail Tucker. I work with Brianna at the Wisconsin Council of Churches, and I am a member of Plymouth Congregational United Church of Christ, which is located in District Fifteen. I live in District Twelve. We recognize that the structural deficit is primarily due to restrictions placed on the city by our state's legislature. We know that the city cannot impose a local income tax or a local sales tax. We know that Madison received the lowest per capita share of revenue from the state of any city in Wisconsin. We recognize that because of these factors, your hands are tied, and you are left with three bad options to address this deficit: slashing our city's operating budget, raising fees, and raising property taxes. Even though our city has grown, previous budget cuts have forced our hard-working city staff to do more with less. Cutting personnel would not only threaten the financial security of their families, but would also diminish our city's ability to meet the needs of its residents. We hope that you will work to protect personnel and the work they do on behalf of all of us. Religious institutions provide substantial support to our city's nonprofits because we believe in protecting the most vulnerable among us. We do our best to care for our neighbors, but we cannot bear the full burden of investing in human services and community development. We need our city to contribute to the flourishing of our communities through continued investment in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Linda Ketchum of District Three, to be followed by Mallory Yankus, to be followed by Tim Schaefer.
Good evening, thank you for your service. I'm Linda Ketchum, I'm the Executive Director of Just Dane, and I'm actually here in that capacity this evening, as well as a resident of District Three. Each year, local faith communities and nonprofits partner with the city of Madison to support individuals and families in our community who are facing a myriad of challenges. It's in that spirit of partnership that we join you this evening to advocate for the protection of our social safety net. As we've heard, our city faces a significant fiscal challenge for 2025. We know that you'll face calls to cut the city's budget. Budget cuts are regressive, disproportionately impacting families living near or below the poverty limit and families of color. Budget cuts will reduce support for survivors of domestic violence, sexual violence, child abuse. Budget cuts will reduce services for people seeking housing, treatment, employment training. They'll reduce initiatives to address and eliminate the racial disparities in our community. As your partners in community, we ask you to continue investing in neighborhoods, in safety, in housing, in a reduction of violence, in health and development of our children. As your partners, we're asking you to find ways to increase revenues to address this budget deficit. We know that you have options, and none of them are great. One of those includes increasing fees or creating new fees. However, fees are generally regressive. Flat fees have a disparate impact on individuals and families with limited incomes. The creation of any new fee or any proposed increase in existing fees must be carefully evaluated through an equity lens to ensure an excessive burden is not placed on lower-income families. If that's what is proposed, we would be hard-pressed to support it. In addition, it would be virtually impossible to raise the funds needed through the inflammation of new fees or the expansion of existing fees. That said, as your partners, we will continue to do our part, supporting the crucial work of the organizations that provide supportive services to our neighbors who may be struggling. And we offer you our support as you look for less regressive ways to generate additional revenue, to maintain our infrastructure, to maintain our safety net, and to continue investing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mallory Yankus of Sun Prairie, to be followed by Tim Schaefer, to be followed by Dan Rolfs. Mallory?
Good evening, I'm Reverend Mallory Yankus. I am a deacon at First United Methodist Church with Pastor Wiegand. I'm here tonight as an individual. While I do live in Sun Prairie, I serve First United Methodist Church in District Two in Madison. Our church draws people from all over Madison, so part of my call to care for our congregation prompts me to testify tonight on this 2025 Madison budget. As you've heard, the clergy here tonight and many others who couldn't be here want to see a voter referendum to raise property taxes to meet or exceed the projected 2025 budget deficit of $27 million. Raising property taxes is not an ideal solution, but it is the best and most equitable solution available to the city to close the budget deficit. It would allow the city to maintain the services, programs, and public resources such as libraries, parks, and infrastructure that make Madison a great place to live and work. Property taxes would only go up modestly, the increase would be proportional to property values. Additionally, there are federal income tax breaks, homestead credits, and other financial assistance programs that exist to offset property tax increases. We believe the $27 million needed to balance the 2025 budget should go to a referendum. And we would also support a referendum with a higher dollar amount that would help balance the budget over the next few years. This would lead to a more, this would lead to more equity and allow our city to not simply get by, but to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tim Schaefer of District One, to be followed by Dan Rolfs, to be followed by Neil Rainford. Tim?
I cannot believe I have to follow all of them. I'm Reverend Tim Schaefer, pastor at First Baptist Church of Madison located in District Five. My colleagues have spoken very eloquently about our desire to see $27 million or more raised by property taxes to close that budget deficit so that our city can thrive. I do not envy you your position, I don't think any of us does. I can't imagine how difficult it is when your hands are tied and you're left with some pretty bad options. But I hope that as you deliberate on the budget, that you carefully consider those guiding questions that are on the top of your agenda. Who benefits? Who is burdened? Who does not have a voice at the table? I have no doubt that you're hearing from many of your constituents that they do not want their property taxes raised. They may even be suggesting to you where you might cut from the budget, things like community development, our social safety net, public transportation, DEI, and more. Things that they do not personally benefit from. As clergy, we absolutely know that often the loudest voices in the room do not represent everyone. They often don't even represent the majority. But they do, very often, represent those with the most privilege. They are the ones that have the time, the resources, the ability to show up at community meetings, email you their opinions, and post their thoughts on Nextdoor and other social media apps. But those whose voices are missing from the table, those who are the most vulnerable in our city, those who will be the most burdened by deep budget cuts and regressive fee increases, most often do not have the time, resources, or ability to make themselves heard. So we are here to speak up for them because they are members of our congregations, they're members of our neighborhoods and our communities. So I want to be clear, we are not asking you to ignore your constituents, those that reach out to you the most. We're simply asking you not to assume that those loudest voices represent all of us. We're urging you to ask yourself those guiding questions every time you receive emails, every time you hold community meetings, every time you speak with your constituents. Who benefits? Who is burdened? Who does not have a voice? Who does not have a voice at the table? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Rolfs of District 15, representing MIPSY, to be followed by Neil Rainford. Dan?
Dan Rolfs, MIPSY. I'm not a reverend or a pastor, and I wish I had gone before them. All of the things that they said are accurate. I'm not the person to speak from a place of theology or some of the perspectives that they have, but I do actually go to church with one of them. What I do is I represent folks in labor who do the things that you all charge us to do, whether that's community development, building inspection, planning, zoning, engineering, parks, on and on. Those things only happen because you have people that do them. And all of that happens to make our city a wonderful place to be. To the point that was raised several times by previous speakers, I have no doubt that you're hearing from folks that they would like to not see their taxes go up. I would respond with two things: that, one, there's almost nothing that this body can do that will prevent that, because as long as demand in Madison is what it is for housing, property values will continue to increase. There's, I won't say nothing you can do, but almost nothing that you can do that will change that mathematical certainty. The other piece is that for the vast majority of property owners, a good amount of their net worth is tied up in that piece of property. So when people say the value that I have, or the net worth that I have selfishly, is tied up in that home, when folks are starting to talk about we don't want property taxes to go up, remind them that their property value is tied up in large part in the services that the city delivers. And it might be some of the things that they personally benefit from, whether it's trash pickup, or leaf pickup, or public safety, or libraries, or it might be things that they don't personally directly benefit from, the things that the previous speakers all mentioned, things that benefit folks who they don't interact with or have very limited contact with. But all of those things combine to make Madison a nice place to live. And we have more than our share of problems. We can talk about that at length. But balancing this budget through nothing but cuts or regressive fee increases is not the way to go. We're here to urge you to look for ways to raise additional revenue in the most progressive way that is available right now to the city. Obviously, sales tax and income taxes are not things that are available. A referendum is a way to move forward that is more progressive than some of the other options that are on the table. I appreciate your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next and last registrant wishing to speak is Neil Rainford of District 14, representing AFSMI Local 6,000.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Neil Rainford. I'm the representative for AFSMI Local 6,000. We represent about 1,000 of the city's employees, and I'm here tonight to encourage you to move forward with this resolution, as well as to, you know, make plans to move forward with the closure of the city's $27 million, give or take, budget deficit going forward. You know, in doing so, I just want to speak some of the truth of the 1,000 or so city employees who are represented by AFSMI, who have really dedicated their lives and their careers to public service, and really need your leadership and support for their continued career. It is something of a commitment to, a considerable commitment to make in this time where, you know, frankly, there's oftentimes better wages and better opportunities elsewhere, but most of the city's employees are called to the service that they provide. And we want to partner with you in continuing to provide those services to make Madison a great place to live. So thanks for your time tonight and support for this.
Thank you. We have no other registrants wishing to speak on Item 84. Are there questions for any of the registrants on Item 84? Seeing none. Then, on Item 91, which is a substitute authorizing the execution of a development agreement and amendment to the 2024 capital budget to fund a tax incremental finance loan to Vermillion Madison LLC. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Alexis Turner of District 9.
Thank you for your time and attention. I must speak and say that I do work for parking, but I'm speaking for myself as a citizen. One of the things that concerns me greatly about the proposal may not necessarily be the TIF district, but the fact that it's proposing 328 dwelling units, market-rate housing, and approximately 361 parking stalls. Really? 361? So, you know, a little over one. So if you ever go on Google Earth and you go up above Disney World, about a mile up, you know what you can see? Any guesses? You can see their parking lot. That's more impermeable surfaces that create greater problems for flooding, and a lot of people, in my impression, my experience, think of parking as a right, not a privilege. And when I interact with people on the phone, it's like, well, where am I supposed to park? Yes, I have a car. I appreciate my car. But I also know I want to leave a better legacy for those behind me, not necessarily physically. But it really concerns me. I know that there is transit demand, or traffic demand management, I think it's transit, and I really would like to see this more integrated in the process because we just cannot afford it. My understanding is our roads, a good percentage of them are at or near capacity, and I think we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other registrants wishing to speak on Item 91. Are there any questions for any of the registrants on Item 91? If not, Alder Viver?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question for Alexis, but thank you for your testimony. Just to clarify, I believe Item 91 was included on the consent motion, so we would have to move reconsideration. I believe it was a late, this is a late registrant.
Yes, you're correct, Alder. That's right. So if the council wishes to take Item 91 up, somebody would have to move reconsideration. That's correct. Thank you, Alder, for catching that. Are there any other questions for any registrants? If not, that brings us to the end of public comment. I'll just pause there. If not, then our first next item is Item 13. Legisstar 81952, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units for properties with up to eight dwelling units and remove owner occupancy requirements for ADUs. President Figueroa, call a motion, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 13. On Item 13, are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions for, oh, Alder Latimer-Burris, question?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. The reason that I pulled this is I know that there's some people in the community that were not aware that we were doing this, and I just wanted to give staff to, an opportunity to address some of the concerns. It sounds like a lot of them have been. I will say personally, so we don't think that, I'm a NIMBY, I do support ADUs and my--
Alder, is there a question?
Yeah, so, just wanted to give staff an opportunity to present to council or give us a summary of, you know, what is this about, and, you know, what's the impact and so forth. So I guess that's not a question, that's a statement.
Katie Bannon is here from Zoning. Katie, would you like to give an overview of the ordinance amendment, please?
Katie Bannon, zoning administrator. As you can see on Legisstar, there is a short staff memo regarding this request, and I'm going to look at it real quickly here. So today, accessory dwelling units, these secondary, smaller dwelling units, either attached or detached from a principal building, a main building, are allowed on single-family home properties and in the transorientive development overlay district with two-family and single-family. So this proposal is to allow accessory dwelling units on properties that also have a building with up to eight units, and also remove the owner occupancy requirements for all properties that have an accessory dwelling unit. As you heard from some of the registrants, there have been some obstacles to building accessory dwelling units, and one of those obstacles has been cost, and another has been this owner occupancy restriction. Very few multifamily properties, like what's proposed, the buildings with up to eight units, if any in our community are owner occupied, so we really wouldn't see any impact for this code change without removing that owner occupancy requirement. But we do anticipate there could be additional built with expanding to eight-unit buildings and removing this owner occupancy requirement. Let me know if you have any additional questions.
Yeah, so just, could you just address, like, how you guys thought about the up to eight units, and then also, you know, did you, with owner occup, I mean, with ADUs, was there any consideration to expanding the square footage that people are allowed to have? So two separate questions, is square footage and addressing the eight units, as for some people, that might be shocking.
Yeah, so this request came from Alder Miyazi. He's the lead sponsor on this bill, and he requested to expand it further. We discussed various unit options, and ultimately, eight was selected as kind of a typical missing-middle number of unit building. And missing middle is kind of a size of multifamily between single and two-family, and some of the larger multifamily we're seeing, there's a big market for that's being built more. How do we encourage more of this smaller scale? Eight units is kind of a typical in-between, and this was really the Alder's request to go to that eight specifically rather than a different number. And the square footage was not something that was discussed at all as part of his request.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional questions? Alder Tischler?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I understand now the, you know, the financial benefits for single-family housing, but I did want to ask, you know, why was the advice to change the owner occupancy for ADUs used for, like, four or eight-unit buildings instead of just allowing them to just add on additional apartments? Why taking the step for the ADU route?
So accessory dwelling units are typically smaller, and as I mentioned, they can be attached or detached. So one of the benefits of allowing accessory dwelling units for this small multifamily is they could do a separate detached additional unit, and that unit would not need to meet commercial building codes. So one of the big obstacles we've seen, sometimes there's a small multifamily, these missing-middle buildings that already exist in our community, and they have room in the basement to potentially add an additional dwelling unit, add egress, but there are commercial building code requirements, like adding sprinklers, or adding an accessible unit in a building that was not designed to be ADA-accessible, that are just so cost prohibitive that that building doesn't get built, that additional unit, I should say, within the building. However, having this detached structure for these small multifamily buildings wouldn't have to meet commercial code, that building itself would just need to meet our residential building code, which applies to one or two families. So we think we may see more impacts here as a result, more units built in this way as detached accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Alder. Any additional questions for staff on Item 13? Seeing, oh, Alder Knox?
Okay, you just gave an explanation, but I'm sitting here thinking, other than the fact that you could have detached what, so you're saying you can have eight detached unit dwellings? Is that what I'm hearing? Because I'm trying to figure out, on the one hand, our apartment building is contained with eight units, but we're allowing you to have eight--
No, Alder, it's--
Am I missing something?
It's to add an accessory dwelling unit which would be detached potentially on a lot that already has an eight-unit attached--
Okay, all right. Because I was just wondering, what's the difference between, on the code, that, okay? So, and are you only allowed--
You'd ultimately end up with two structures.
--to add one? Or how many of these? Okay, because I was kind of getting that a little mixed up. So you got eight-unit apartment building, you can add some additional--
One.
--one additional unit. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any additional questions? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, is there discussion on Item 13? Seeing no discussion on Item 13. Alder Miyazi.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank all the people that, Alders that sponsored it, and also I just wanted to give a shout-out to my, actually, my next-door neighbor, Michael Leeson, that actually spoke. He was the one that came up with this idea. As you see, Madison, there's always, he was talking about, we actually met for coffee, and we're actually talking about all the high-rises that you see going up in Madison, and he thought about why not expand, allow people to expand on their property. And I know this is not a huge fix-all to the housing crisis that we're going through, but something small. So I just wanted to make sure that I actually gave credit to my next-door neighbor that actually helped me come up with this ordinance, and also to thank city staff and Alders that actually sponsored it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue wishing to speak, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Item 13? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor of Item 13. That will take us to Item 24. You'll recall, Item 24, we had a mistake in registration, so it was separated. Item 24 is Legisstar 82695, the Plan, Specifications, and Assessments for Stevens Street. On Item 24, President Figueroa, call a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 24. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 24. Item 25 is Legisstar 82696, approving Plan, Specifications, and a Schedule of Assessments for Hermana Street and Union Street Reconstruction Assessment District. On Item 25, President Figueroa, call a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 25. Are there questions for staff on Item 25? Seeing none. On Item 25, is there discussion? Seeing none. On Item 25, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 25, and we will move on to Item 48. Item 48 is Legisstar 82222, amending sections of the Madison General Ordinance related to animals that cause injury and requiring them to be restrained at all times. On Item 48, President Figueroa, call a motion, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt Item 48. Are there questions for staff? Seeing no questions-- Seeing no questions for staff, is there discussion on item 48? Seeing no discussion on item 48, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor of item 48. And move on to item 77. Item 77 is 82079, directing the Finance Department to issue a report analyzing city operating budgets from 2019 to 2024 and calling on the state legislature to authorize local sales tax options. On item 77, President Figueroa Cole.
Second.
Moved and seconded Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Are there questions for staff on item 77? Seeing no questions for staff, is there discussion on item 77? Alder Latimer verse.
Yeah, so I put in the, the resolution that I had, was thinking about it for quite a long time. I think it's something that the public, over the long term, would like relief from is as we head into a budget where we're likely going to have to raise people's taxes. And so I know that it's difficult for us to work with the state legislature, but I think it's something where we can get started. I know that it's not a solution for immediate causes, but over the long run, you can't change something that you don't get started on. So long-term, this could be a possibility. There's nobody that says that it's totally never a possibility. We know Milwaukee did it. I understand what happened in Milwaukee because I read the Wisconsin Policy Institute 50-page brief on Milwaukee's problems. So I would ask the council to support this. It went through the EOC and then the Finance Committee, it did not pass with a couple of Alders and the mayor not agreeing. It was adopted first, amended first with Alder Vitavir saying we should go back and get information going maybe 10 years back. I have no problem with getting information. I want the information because the budget, the referendum, all of that is going to come on our shoulders. So we should have as much information and possibilities as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any additional discussion on item 77? Alder Govindarajan.
Just to clarify, this is the right time for debate?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just a little confused about this resolution. It's, as I'm reading, I'm so sorry, my table's a mess. As I'm reading this, it makes it sound like this is the first time we're really thinking about a sales tax. That's not really the case. We've, and like for details, maybe the mayor can correct me or Alder Brevier or someone, but we've been asking the state legislature for a sales tax for quite some time. It was in the governor's budget recommendation. The state legislature took it out in the most recent budget. We've been working, trying to get this for a long time. So this isn't a brand-new idea. I think everyone here wants the sales tax. I think that's something that's definitely going to help our city. But this resolution, I don't know if it's, first of all, it's not even being sent to the state legislature, so they're not going to see this. This isn't a call to action. This isn't anything that I think is going to be effective in a way. So I think there could be some changes made to this. But I, I'm just really struggling to see what this resolution is actually calling for in an effective manner, if that makes sense. Like, no offense meant, but I don't know. That's my point of this. It's, we haven't, we've done this for a while. We know that the legislature is not willing to work with us. We know that when they did it for Milwaukee, they put in over a dozen poison pills that really harmed the city itself of Milwaukee. I'm a little bit confused about why this is calling for a sales tax for a Madison-area transit district. Is the sales tax just specifically for a transit district? Can we not use it for other funds? What is a transit district? Because the whereas clauses don't refer to it whatsoever. I think there's just a little bit of work that this resolution would need to do. I think it's potentially heading in the right direction, but not something that I think I can support in this moment. The data that's also being asked of the finance staff is also data that we have readily available. The first two, city population and the size of the operating budget, we can get with a quick Google search. The other two, I know we've seen with the presentations that we got over the last couple of months. I just am really struggling to see the point of this resolution and whether this is an efficient way, use it for time, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any additional discussion?
Can I respond to that?
Alder Latimer verse.
Yeah, so I think the governor's, the fact that, you know, the governor asked for this is mentioned. I think you are making exactly
Alder, please address the chair.
I think you are making exactly the point that, you know, your questions, we may, when we get the information from finance, who, this resolution was sent through finance. There was one that was different at first and finance took a whack at it to, to say that, you know, to make it accurate and to have a clear understanding. So we're never going to get everything perfect. But this will allow us to get information in an organized, compiled way as we continue on this year and next year and the next five years to be responsible in part for the budget. So it's asking us to just get started. What that looks like, we won't know all the details.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everyone. I, I guess I question why we would not support this. I'm sorry, there was a period of time when the council would imagine the media optics if we voted a certain way. So imagine tomorrow, the coming council votes against asking for the state to take up two really key components of some of the solutions to our problems. Let's just, if it's not perfect enough for you to vote for it, let's refer it, add more data or details if that's what you think it needs. Otherwise, to me, it just sends a message that we think that there should be, we want to work on getting a sales tax for, for Dane County, and we also need a regional transit authority that will be based on a sales tax to help fund. I think that is like the most key thing when we think about the growth of our area. How do we serve everyone? Anyway, I think it just is common sense and I hope you will vote not to place it on file. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, I have, I have to agree with Alder Rommel. I don't, I think we should keep, be keeping all options open. I, I guess my question, I guess maybe to, 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 to the mayor, to you, Madam Mayor, is, I understand you, if I'm understanding, I was, I did not watch the, the Finance Committee where this came up, is that correct? Or, but you, you voted no on this, is that correct or am I?
Yes, Alder, that's correct. I voted no because I don't think it's a good use of finance staff's time to compile the information that's requested in the resolution. That information is all available to us.
Right.
And if, if the resolution did not ask finance staff to do unnecessary work, I wouldn't have any objection to it. But I will say, regardless of whether this resolution passes or not, the city's legislative agenda will continue, has for over a decade included a request to be able to have form a regional transit authority, will continue to contain that, and it will continue to contain a request to have the ability to levy a sales tax locally. So I appreciate, obviously, the support of the council for those two items, but those two items will remain on our legislative agenda regardless.
Let somebody else talk here.
Alder Evers.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I voted against this at finance for reasons similar to Alder Govindarajan. I am so sorry. I need to work on pronouncing your name. Govindarajan. Because, yes, it's true that there are all kinds of things that we can ask for of the state legislature. But at a certain point, it becomes performative for us to, to put into writing things that we're already doing and to ask staff to do something that they are already doing and have already provided. And so to me, it felt unnecessary. I think that it's quite clear how, what this, how this legislative body stands with respect to an ultimate solution regarding the ability to add something to the sales tax here in the city and in Dane County. But we're not even in a legislative session where this would have any impact. So again, I am not in favor of performative resolutions or actions by this body. I'm in favor of things that will actually make a difference. And that's why I didn't support it at finance. And that's why I won't support it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
My question to finance, because you're here, I'm wondering what is the staff burden or lack thereof, I guess, of providing this information? Will it require a lot of staff time?
We can go back to questions for staff, Alder.
Thank you.
Director Schmedeke.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. It would take some staff time to pull this together. I think as some of the speakers have said, this information's available in budgets, budget documents. But yes, it would take some staff time to pull it together.
Do you know how much?
No, I can't give you an estimate of how much time it would take, so.
Okay, thank, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you. I, I do just want to say, I ask that because it seems like if a lot of the information is publicly available or readily available, I don't want to presume it wouldn't take a lot of time. But I also, it, it seems as though it, would it not not take a lot of time? So, and I, I guess my hesitation to immediately just say, no, like, yeah, like, like get on board with just putting it on files, because like, on principle, I do believe that we should, that, that we should have a sales tax, that the legislature should give us a sales tax. I'm entirely aware of and cognizant and realistic with our current state legislature makeup that that is something that is not a realistic possibility at this moment in time with the current state legislature makeup. Though, I mean, this council has taken many actions that basically just shares what our, what our beliefs are. So I think that there, I don't really see an issue with making it, making it clear what our intentions are, especially in terms of communicating these intents, not just to like the legislature, but also to the broader public. When the broader public is coming to us, asking, why are you raising my taxes? Why not do the sales tax? This is, offers a clear pathway to say, this is why. We cannot make that happen. So I guess if it doesn't, if, if the information is like readily available for finance staff and maybe it doesn't take as much time to put it together and ultimately it's just making a statement in general that we want a sales tax, I don't really see the harm in it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with Alder Bennett here, you know, on this one. Look, if the information is available, I don't think it's going to be that time-consuming to compile it. But I really do think that we need to keep publicly making the case and to the legislature making the case that, you know, we desire this property taxes. And this council makes performative statements all the time, you know? We pass resolutions about what should happen in Africa, for that matter. We do. You know, we do. We know it may not have any impact, but we do it. We make those statements all the time. And so why not make this one too across the street here, you know? I, I don't see where it harms anything. Make the statement and keep making it until maybe somebody starts hearing this. So I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It may be because I'm late and just forgetting process, but wouldn't it be appropriate for any member of the body to move an amendment to change the action that we're talking about?
Yes, it would.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wajilehi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Alder, please speak into the mic. Thank you.
Yep. So my question is, you know, when we're hearing that, you know, so many years, we really wanted to do the sales tax. And my question is, what has been the measure in a proactive way that we have engaged in this sales tax? And, you know, so my second question is, in terms of proactively looking into the sales tax, what will be the timeline from the, the finance department to put something together to explore that?
Sorry, Alder, who's that a question for?
For, for Dave.
Take a stab at it, Dave.
Alder Wajilehi, I'm not quite sure I understand your question. You're talking about how much time it would take to try to implement a sales tax or ask the legislature for that?
My first question is, has there been a proactive activities where we actually ask the state to implement the sales tax? Number one. And if we want to go with this resolution, you know, like what would be the timeline in terms of putting together something?
Well, I think it's been spoken to already that this has been included in the city's legislative agenda for, you know, many years in terms of expanding our revenues, including a local option sales tax. I think it's also been referenced that the governor has included proposals, I think, at least in his last two budgets for a local option sales tax. So it's really hard to say at what point the legislature would agree to something like that. I can't really make an estimate of that other than we can continue to ask for it over time and continue to advocate for that. So.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to adopt but strike the final two therefore clauses or therefore be resolved clauses. The final one just places a burden onto finance staff that I think we've understood that we have that information readily available. And for the second two bullet points, it would take a lot of time to compile it altogether. I think we, as Alders, we can Google the city population and then go through the budget packets to figure out the rest of things. The second to last therefore clause, I don't want, I, I would like this to pass because I support a sales tax. I even support a transit authority. But I don't want to tie a sales tax directly into a transit authority, especially one similar to Milwaukee where they did get a lot, a lot of poison pills from the state legislature. So I don't want to imply that we want something similar. I think we want something better than that. But again, if this basic resolution passes, then we are calling in favor of a sales tax, something we've already been doing for a decade now, something that's been in the governor's budget. And hopefully, the legislature listens in the future, but that's my motion.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Alder. Moved and seconded to adopt the resolution while striking the final two therefore be resolved clauses.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So we're on a new motion. Are there questions? Is there additional discussion? Alder Bennett.
I guess my one question is
Alder Bennett, the microphone, please.
Please. Sorry, my one question is, this is not going, this is not automatically sent to the legislature? Like, if we wanted that to happen, we would have to add it to the resolution or can we just like come back after and, and like send it to the legislature?
I mean, you're, you're welcome to add I mean, you're welcome to add a clause that directs staff to send it to the legislature. I'm looking at Karen. I'm fairly certain she'd be willing to do that without the clause. Certainly, my office will continue to communicate with the governor's office and the legislature about these items.
Okay, okay, sure. Well, if this were to pass, then I would hope that the council office sends it to the legislature people. Yeah.
Legislative intent is clear on this matter. Thank you, Alder. Alder Weheli?
Can we also add that the...
The microphone, Alder. And press the button, please.
Yes.
Thank you. I know it's late.
So, can we add the council members to be more proactively involved in engaging those legislators?
Alder, if you're wishing to make an amendment, we need language...
To add that, yes.
If you wish to make an amendment, we're going to need specific language. Otherwise, please express your desire to your colleagues. Perhaps without an amendment, you could just express your desire to your colleagues? All right. Moving on. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yeah, I just wanted to make commentary on, you know, again, with the data. We always want to come back through Finance to get the correct data. We can Google whatever we want. We can go and search for it in the budgets and whatnot. When I spoke with Finance, they seemed to have the feeling that there would be a little bit of work, but it wouldn't be extraordinary. And again, it doesn't hurt just to get started. So, for us to just drill it down to perfection, that's not going to happen even as we pursue the sales tax. So, just ask if we could go ahead and leave it as is. We can vote for one. I don't know if that kills number two, but it's just something to saying, let's get going.
Alder Conklin?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please. Roll call will be granted. Alder Curry? Yes, please.
I just want to make a comment and say that considering the late hour and considering we still have an item regarding the budget and preparations for it ahead of us, it's frustrating that we've been in the same space almost from when I left to the restroom and when I returned. And I find it ironic how contradictory our message and values is of respecting staff time and honoring the work that our staff do and honoring the expertise that they bring to the job, that we're debating how they should spend their time. When it's been made, the comment's been made several times tonight, the information is there. So, I would implore you to vote against this and use your energy to put forward the work that you're looking to gather, if it is so readily available and won't take as much time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Just brings us back to what's before us. Right, what's before us is the Govindarajan motion to adopt while striking the final two therefore be resolved clauses. A roll call's been requested when we get to a vote. If there is no further discussion...
So, the amendment...
Alder Bennett, the microphone, please.
The amendment to clarify is to take out the portions that require staff time.
That is the effect of the amendment. It's, yes, that's the effect of the motion before you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. Seeing no further Alders wishing to speak, what's before us is the Govindarajan motion to adopt the resolution and to strike the final two therefore be it resolved clauses. Is everybody clear on the motion? Okay. Alder Knox?
He indicated the last two. That would include...
Please use the microphone, Alder.
That would include the issue related to the Transit District as well?
Yes, that's correct, Alder.
And the, yep, so, two.
The final two therefore be it resolved clauses. All right. A roll call's been requested. So, all those in favor of the Govindarajan motion to adopt while striking the final two clauses will say aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Conklin?
No.
No. Alder Curry?
No.
No. Vice President Duncan?
No.
No. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Field?
Aye.
Aye. President Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Ughere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Alder Knox?
No.
No. Alder Latimer-Burris?
[inaudible]
Alder Madison is excused. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Meadzi?
No.
No. Alder Rommel?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Revere?
No.
No. Alder Vitavir?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Weheli?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Latimer-Burris?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Mayor, I have 11 ayes, seven noes, and one abstention.
Thank you. With 11 ayes, the motion passes. And we will move on to item 84.
We need to pass the main link.
That was the main motion. The motion was to adopt with the, striking the last two clauses. So, that item is adopted. And we'll move on to item 84, which is Legisstar 82456, Establishing Guidance for Developing the 2025 City Budget. President Figueroa Cole, the motion is to adopt the substitute?
Motion for adopt the substitute.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Are there questions for staff on item 84? Alder Latimer-Burris?
I have a point of information. I guess I would like to ask Attorney Haas, is this where I could move the substit-, I don't know, also, President Curry, if it's, could I ask President Curry what kind of motion it is?
So, it would be a four amendment at this point.
Okay.
The substitutes has been moved. You can amend that.
Okay. So, I would move to amend, what is the language that I could say it properly? I'm sorry.
Alder, the language you want is that you would move an amendment?
Move an amendment that was sent around to you guys this afternoon.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
This is second for discussion purposes. Alder, do you wish to speak to your amendment? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Oh, sure. So, you know, I had met with some of the Alders about, you know, some of the concerns regarding the budget. And one of the things that I think that we should make clear is that we are at the beginning of this process. I appreciate all of the videos, the instruction, the encouragement to read, the questions being answered. We are up on a serious issue. And I want to, I don't want to gloss over the facts or how the general public will see it. So, the general public is going to see that we are pushing a referendum and we are responsible for the budget. And I don't think that's exactly how it is. I don't think any of us want to lay off staff, nor do I think the majority of us want to have a referendum. But we are in that place where we probably need to have one. And so, I think, you know, I spent a lot of time going through the language and having discussions with Alder Rommel and other Alders about just getting the language right. So, the responsibility lays where it should be. And it's not substantially different from the original, but I think it makes it clear that we, as a council, are new to this process and are learning. And, you know, it's not, it's not the other way. It's about leadership. It's not that we drive the mayor, we drive staff, and we want the resolution, rather than we're accepting that this is where we're at and we have to hear this. So, I worked pretty hard on the language to, you know, segregate responsibility.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Madam Mayor.
It needs to be green. There you go.
Thank you. My question, I don't know if it's in order, it really was related to, and you will correct me if I'm out of order, where it says the fiscal note said, no appropriation required. This resolution establishes guidance, guidance to staff for developing, I don't know where the rest of it is. But then, at the very last item, it talks about item number seven. On the last page, it says, develop a community engagement plan to educate the public on the city's financial condition and options for addressing the structural deficit, and may engage a consultant to support this work if needed. And so, my question is, is that in the first part, it says that no appropriations, but if we engage a consultant if needed, that puts it into another space?
No, Alder. It just simply means that any funds expended would have to be within the existing budget, would not be able to go outside of the existing budget.
Okay. So, the funding for that, if there's a need for a consultant, would already be allocated within?
Or any of the other outreach responsibilities that are suggested in that clause, they would have to come from existing budgets.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Ughere?
Yes, if I understand the substitute amendment, and certainly applaud the effort that went into this and the effort to try to present ideas in a proper format that will get the attention of the public. But if I understand the amendment, and I'm looking at a version that our chief of staff put together with the strikeouts and so forth, that the new item eight, because there's an insertion for seven, actually eliminates the consultant piece of this? Am I reading that correct? That it didn't?
I believe that's correct, Alder.
And that's a problem for me, because I think that a critical issue in our engagement with the public will be a high level of professionalism and expertise in presenting the kind of facts that will be out there. In particular, a thorough explanation of the change in services that would be required if we had to do this through expenses. So, my assumption is, is that a particular use of a consultant might be to help us with the messaging to the public, and that it could be a critical factor.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Alder Latimer-Burris for the second time?
Sorry about that. Karen just came over. We've been going back and forth. We can put that back in. The main thing is, we didn't want to try to put additional $80,000 into the budget or something. Don't quote me. I not remember the number exactly, but during the budget, there was, you know, some additional money for consulting. It might not even be $80,000. My peers probably know the number. But we've got to get out and, you know, rally and do consulting. But I don't think that we should be putting additional funds to do that. So, I'm happy to put that back in. It's just, no appropriations towards it.
That's not how it works.
It's, okay. Okay. So...
Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. There is lots of good speeches by folks in the faith community that spoke about the need for us to choose the most progressive revenue options. And that actually was something that we discussed in our meeting, committee meeting of the whole. And I noticed that this is crossed out here. Different, I feel like that there's a great, there's a real effort to kind of micromanage the substitute that was there and wordsmithing it to the point where very little improvement is made. And I'm afraid that it just, you know, we didn't get this until the very last minute. I don't think it's reasonable for us to remove the notion of choosing the most progressive revenue option, which was clearly the consensus of that previous meeting. So, I'm quite content with the substitute that was presented to us already. And for that reason, I won't be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other Alders wishing to speak? Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. I have, there is various concerns. A lot of the edits, I feel like, to kind of summarize what's been said, I don't think make a lot of difference in what they've been made. But the one that I really have a problem with is, at the very last part, it says, in number six, it says, we're going to explore prohibited possibilities such as the sales tax. And I also, again, want to reiterate, I think this places an extra burden on Finance staff, who will be very busy over the next several months. If there are prohibited possibilities, then it's good to know them. I don't think we need to explore them and delve into them and find the details of how we can get them because they are prohibited. That is, I don't understand why we were putting in that extra work there when we know it's not going to happen. I was going to address the consulting. I think that's been addressed pretty well as well. And then, what Alder Evers said with the progressiveness, or the progressive rate, I guess. But I'm having some trouble just supporting it. And with the substitute, given it how it just came just a couple hours ago, and there wasn't much notice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. What's before us is the Latimer-Burris amendment, which is multifold, so I will not go through each and every change. But hopefully, you have it before you. The motion is to adopt the Latimer-Burris amendment, anticipating disagreement. Perhaps we'll do a roll call. So, all those in favor of the amendment, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Bennett?
No.
No. Alder Conklin?
No.
No. Alder Curry?
No.
No. Vice President Duncan?
No.
No. Alder Evers?
No.
No. Alder Field?
No.
No. President Figueroa Cole?
No.
No. Alder Govindarajan?
No.
No. Alder Ughere?
No.
No. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Madison is excused. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
No.
No. Alder Meadzi?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Rommel?
No.
No. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
No. Alder Revere?
No.
No. Alder Vitavir?
No.
No. Alder Weheli?
No.
No. Madam Mayor, I have five ayes and 14 noes.
Thank you. With five ayes, the motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to adopt the substitute. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the substitute? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the substitute. And I believe that is the final item. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, which name did you call for us tonight?
Alder Bennett.
Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett. A motion, please.
Move adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.